Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor,
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
October 24th, city council meeting. As we get things kicked off, we normally begin with a prayer. And I don't see, is Pastor Vince Allen? Hey Vince, I didn't see you had a minute. Come on up, please, sir. From Faith Nation of Columbus, Georgia. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, to all of the employees of our great city, and also to our citizens of Columbus, Georgia. Welcome to this evening's city council. Let us bow in prayer. Most gracious God, our Father, it is with such appreciation that we come before you today and thank you for this day that you've given us. We know that there are so many that are struggling and that are being challenged by life during this season that we're in such volatile times, times that are so sensitive. And we pray, Father, that you will heighten our sensitivity to even the needs of the citizens of this great city. We pray, Father, that our leadership represents your leadership and represents your wisdom. Father, that our heart of compassion is shown by every decision that we make. Even though there are business decisions, we thank you, Father, now that these decisions impact our citizens in a positive way. We pray for the leaders of our Public Safety Division. We pray, Father, that you give them insight and strategies on how to deal with the crime, God, with the unease that goes on in our city. And Father, I pray in the precious name of Jesus that crime rates go down, that the city becomes safer and safer by the day, that we understand, Father, that when one part of our city hurts, then all parts of our city hurt. Now, we pray that as decisions are made this evening, Father, we thank you for your guidance. And we thank you, Father, for your wisdom. This prayer I ask in the precious name of my Savior, your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Allen, thank you, sir, very much. And thank you for what you do throughout the city. You and your congregation have a way of getting outside the walls of the church and serving the people of Columbus, and we're grateful for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first order of business is the minutes from October 10th. Motion and a second to receive the minutes. Are there any edits? All right, Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Last session, I made a motion to accept all of the crossover documents, well, the crossover, what do you call? Carryover, thank you, for the legislative agenda. And afterwards, I remembered, well, I was told that number 17, the housing affordability, was not a carryover item. It was not voted to be taken up to the legislative body. And so, I'd like to amend those minutes and remove that motion because my motion was stated as to vote on to vote on all of the carryover items, and this was not a carryover item.
Okay, yeah, but I was just curious, if that was voted on by council, do we need to rescind that vote?
No, sir, you just need to amend the minute right now. But that was not a carryover item.
Okay, but it was still approved, but then we'll have to go, okay. All right, so there's a motion to remove the wording of that being a carryover item. There's a second, motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it's removed from that context. Did you want to remove that item?
I wanted to remove that from my motion, my original motion from last session because I was under the impression at that time that it was a carryover item, and it was not, and so...
I got you. In that, the, I think the verbiage within the minutes have been changed. Now, I think the next thing you need to do is ask a reconsideration of that item being voted to go on, and then have council vote to remove it.
Okay.
Okay.
What he said.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The motion would come from someone that voted in the affirmative.
I think everybody voted.
And no, Counselor Crabbe, did you change your vote to no?
I voted no against that, so we need somebody.
Okay, Clifton, you want to push your button?
Yeah, what the clerk said is right. It just needs to come from somebody who voted yes. And I think you had one or two dissents with Counselor Crabbe, so somebody else would have to make the motion.
All right, there's a motion to reconsider item number seven being forwarded on to our...
Seventeen.
Seventeen, sorry. All right, is there a second? All right, there is a second, motion, second. Any further discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so that has been pulled from the minutes. It's also been rescinded as far as a positive vote forward the affordable housing request on to our delegation.
Mr. Mayor, that was just to reconsider the vote, so we do need an actual vote on that matter.
Now, you take a revote.
Okay, all right. So, is there any motion to add that item, to send it to...
To approve or deny, to approve or deny that resolution.
Yeah, so if there's a motion to move that forward, and if there's no motion, it dies for a lack of a motion.
It will remain the same as an approved resolution.
Okay. All right, well, so we need a motion to deny. Remove, yeah, we need a motion to remove seventeen. In order to take a vote. Okay, motion, second, remove seventeen. Any further discussion?
And this would actually, Mr. Mayor, be to deny the resolution or to rescind it because it has already been approved. So, this is to rescind it.
To rescind it.
Right, and that's what, that's what they just, they just said. No, just item seventeen.
Yes, just seventeen, yes.
All right, so all in favor, oh, Counselor House.
Question, question, question. I'm just trying to get an understanding on voting yes means what? And voting no means what?
Means you take, voting yes means you're removing item seventeen.
Item seventeen was affordable housing?
Affordable housing. So, a vote no would mean you're voting for it to stay on.
Okay, and what was in the affordable housing piece?
It was really just an effort to support the affordable housing initiatives that are being undertaken in the state. Thought that's what we had.
I just need clarification what it is. Rent control?
Yes.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with just a normal, everyday affordable housing?
Well, as a Realtor and a property manager, I can assure you that rent control will not equal affordable housing. It will be just the opposite.
City manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to read number seventeen.
Okay.
Says, "The Columbus Consolidated Government is requesting the legislative delegation introduce an amendment to statewide legislation to allow cities and counties to enact localized anti-displacement policies for properties in qualified census tracts and difficult development areas, economically depressed zones as defined by general law." And further says that prohibits city and county governments from enacting, maintaining, or enforcing any ordinance or resolution which would regulate in any way the amount of rent to be charged for privately owned, single-family or multifamily unit residential rental property. Rising rents compound the overall financial insecurity of many households. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines a cost-burdened household as one that spends more than 30% of its income on housing costs. The onslaught of pandemic-related job losses, rising healthcare costs, and increased costs of necessities due to inflation and supply chain issues likely worsened the outlook of many renters. The pain of rising rents and the associated financial insecurity disproportionately affects single parents, individuals with disparities, excuse me, with disabilities, older adults, and people with multiple or intersecting identities. The COVID-19 pandemic and subsequent economic fallout succeeded in shining a harsh light on the ongoing housing crisis. And that was a request of Counselor Toya Tucker, and it was listed as a carryover from the previous year, but that was inadvertent.
Okay. My last question is, could I get, Counselor Tucker, could you help me with this? When you first put it on the table, was it to...
It wasn't rent control. It was, it wasn't, I had spoke with ACCG on this, and it wasn't... A rent control.
Okay.
And it's, I think it states in there that it's not in a somewhat of a wording that it's not rent control.
No, those words actually mean rent control. They actually mean rent control. They're, they're saying that you can, you know, legislate what a landlord can and can't do with their own personal property. And I think that it would be better to empower the tenant with knowledge and behavior so that they keep their rents low. Because when I have a good tenant in one of my properties that's paying on time and is not damaging the property, there's no need for us to raise the rent on them.
How does, how does...
I've had tenants in properties for 10 years or more.
Yeah, how does this affect the overall affordable housing situation?
It doesn't, it will, it's going to not help affordable housing at all because, because you're making a situation where you are legislating a business. And they have to have the flexibility to be able, it also mentions about how not being able to displace a tenant. So, if a tenant is not paying rent or is breaking the lease, you know, it's telling, it's telling the landlord that they can't displace them.
All right.
And so...
Go ahead. Let me hear what it was.
Well, it appears in the explanation that there is a current Georgia law, OCGA Section 44-7-19, and that law prohibits city and county governments from enacting, maintaining, or enforcing any ordinance or resolution which would regulate in any way the amount of rent to be charged for privately owned, single-family, multifamily homes and so forth. That's what the Georgia law says, you cannot, city and county ordinance or resolutions cannot do that. And so, what was proposed to, in the, on the agenda, is that the CCG is requesting that the local legislative delegation introduce an amendment, an amendment to said statewide legislation to allow cities and counties to enact localized anti-displacement policies for properties in qualified census tracts.
Counselor Thomas, where'd you go?
I think we need to be very careful how we move along this. Counselor Crabbe has made the motion and the body accepted the motion that the minutes be corrected, that this was not a carryover. The second thing, we are, we can, at some later date, if we wish to, if council wishes to, bring this item back for consideration. And I think that it may be inappropriate to do that particular thing right now. What we were, what we are looking at on the agenda are the minutes and how we will have the minutes reflect. So, if someone wants to bring this back, they may do that at a later time, either, probably at a later meeting. But otherwise, this would not be part of the agenda, of the legislative agenda for the council moving forward.
Right, typically, if there is any, if there's any contentiousness around any of these items, even if it's like two individuals don't want it, we don't send it because what we're sending forward is our legislative agenda, and it typically is one that is backed by the entire council because our, our delegation is not going to take up a recommendation for anything that has a split vote. So, it'll be difficult. So, I agree with what you're saying.
And we can at any point bring this item up or any other item up that we want on the legislative agenda through the time of the legislative session.
Correct.
And we have done that in the past. We've brought things up. So, at this point, our, our action is to delete this from our legislative agenda. And then if someone wishes to bring it back, they can bring it back under the legislative agenda criteria and discussion.
Well, there's a motion right now to remove it. This is conversation and comments that are to that motion. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I value Counselor Thomas. I value your position and your comments. And Counselor Tucker, I respect your request to ask. That's exactly what this is, but let me explain what happened here. And the reason I made the motion to reconsider, it's a reconsider. I was going to make that motion tonight anyway at some point in this meeting because what happened at the last meeting, I want to remain consistent with my vote of what happened last year. What happened at the last minute is we took like 10 or 15, let me back up, we took close to 10-plus items and we voted on them in bulk, okay, last week. This one was in the middle of it. And I didn't flag it until after the council meeting was over. I intended to come here tonight to reconsider, to change my vote. It doesn't mean that anybody has to change their vote. I mean, this is just the procedure, how it's going. That's why I made the motion to reconsider, because I'm going to get that done now. That's what I would have to done, do anyway. If you don't agree with it, you, you don't have to vote with the motion. That's all it is. But I just want to explain that, Mayor, that that's the reason I moved this forward in order to, to deal with this matter because it's on the table.
Good deal. Thank you. Counselor Tucker, to the motion?
I was fine with you all removing it, but I did want to explain the qualified census tract. I think we need to really understand that that does not mean all of Columbus, Georgia. It's actually particular areas within the census tract, meaning the very low-income areas, not all of Columbus. This was just really something that came up during COVID, and it was one of the initiatives that we were discussing at ACCG for local rule. You know, a lot of times, you have state rule, and often when we're at ACCG, we're always fighting for local rule. So, it was given the opportunity for local counties and municipalities to make the decision based on that law that's on the books to either allow for some type of guardrails where people would not be charged two, three, four, five times the rent because rent was going up double in certain areas and low-income areas and really pricing individuals out of their home. I can't think of the name of the, the area, but, you know, we had gotten calls. It's somewhere over in Carver Heights, I guess they call them the bottoms, where their rent had went up twice. So, that's twice the rent. So, whatever their amount was, it had doubled and then in some ways tripled. So, it was a conversation that was had at ACCG in reference to local rule, meaning local municipalities and counties would have the option per us voting at later times, but to have the option to do that. That's all this was. But, you know, I'm, far as this vote, I'mma vote my conscience and y'all vote y'all's.
All right. All right, ma'am clerk, to clarify, there has been a motion, second.
A motion and second to rescind.
A yes vote means that it is removed.
It will be removed, right.
All right, so we call the question. All in favor of rescinding that particular item, please say aye. Any opposed from rescinding it? No, if you are in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Those opposed, say.
One.
Okay. Now, did we approve the minutes? We haven't gotten to the minutes yet. I think we did, but we went back and reviewed this, didn't we? Yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to approve them.
Yes, we need to approve the minutes. As amended.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Motion, second, to approve the minutes, as amended. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Okay, next, the Columbus Water Works, although they're not required to come here and ask for permission, we did ask them, and they've agreed every year as they go through their, their financials for the next year, they come up and give a statement. So, we've invited Steve Davis and, and folks from the CWW. So, Steve, welcome. You know, hit the, Chris, turn that light on, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City councilors, we appreciate the opportunity to use your council meeting for a public forum for our annual rate increase. We know you've got a full agenda, so we'll try to be concise so you can move on with all the busy work you've got to do, all the valuable work you've got to do for the city of Columbus. We have been doing this rate strategy since 2002. We've engaged with Raftellus, that's a consulting firm that helps utilities across the country in evaluating their rate structures. And the reason we developed a strategy that allows us to look back five years historically at our cost and revenues and then look forward five years for our proposed cost and revenues is so that we can minimize the cost impact to our customers. Prior to that time, we would have rate increases that would spike up 20 and 30%, and then no rate increases. So, over time, this has allowed us to level out our rate increases. And for the most part, our customers seem to accept that and anticipate it because it does keep those increases typically very low. So, what I'll do is give a bit of an overview, and then I will hand it off to our CFO, Carl Robertson. He'll begin to dive into the details a little more with Joe Crea of Raftellus, who will get more into the details of the proposed rate increase. We did have a public hearing last week at the library, and so, we tried to get the message out to our customers as much as we can. We send it out through lots of different mediums and then invite them come face to face to talk with us about it. And as you hear, year after year, a lot of our rate increases is about infrastructure. And this slide right here is just a good example of the magnitude of the infrastructure that we have to maintain. This is a picture of our wastewater treatment plant. Initial parts of it were built in 1964, and then it's been expanded, renewed, and replaced over the years. It's rare to have a year when there's not some kind of construction activity going on at that site. And so, our purpose is personal. We protect our neighbors. This is our purpose statement. We protect our neighbors by providing essential water, water, the fuel of life. We serve about 250,000 people in Muskogee County, Fort Moore. We wholesale to Harris County, Talbot County. And we provide essential drinking water and wastewater treatment services. Been doing it for over 100 years. We protect the environment for our water supply and the quality of life. We, CWW, we live, work, and play here too, so it's personal to us. And you see some of our employees that are just doing their daily task, 24/7, 365, we've got people working to provide these services to our customers. And we've got an excellent team of committed employees. And we're not an organization that just kind of sits back and maintains the status quo. We lean into continuous improvement. How can we serve our customers better? And a way to do that is to compete annually for a variety of awards. It helps sharpen our team, and so, we compete. And we win a lot of awards year in and year out. And this is just an example. You can see Water Treatment Plant Awards, Distribution System Award, Collection System Award, Laboratory Excellence Awards, and, and Personal Achievement Awards. So, we, we strive to do the best we can for our customers. And like I said, our purpose is essentially delivering safe, clean water to our customers and returning clean wastewater to the river, treated wastewater. So, it is back to a condition that meets permit. And what it takes as far as our rates is, you know, attracting and retaining good, competent, qualified employees that we can train and, and keep interested and energized to do their jobs right. It takes a lot of infrastructure. You saw the one picture, that's only a part of our system. If that one plant, if we were to replace it in today's dollars, it'd probably be a billion dollars to replace that one plant. And we've got a project going on at that plant right now where we're improving the concrete basins that are beginning to crack and deteriorate because of the harsh treatment environment. They're trying to get that thing to last another 10 or 20 years so we can avoid those kind of costs as long as we can. So, infrastructure, we're always renewing our infrastructure, always reinvesting in our infrastructure. It's a, it's a key component of how we serve our customers. Regulatory compliance, last decade or so hasn't been too big a driver in our rates, but that's changing. We've, we're anticipating a NPDS permit update at our south plant, and we're expecting phosphorus and possible nutrient limits. And we don't know what those numbers are. So, we don't have those in our proposed rate increase. If we get high limits, then we can probably handle that and be in compliance. If we get low phosphorus limits, then we're going to have to put some, some tremendous dollars in infrastructure to be able to up that level of treatment. So, we're, we're hoping for high limits, but we'll, we'll see. And we also have PFOS regulations that are expected in, by, from EPA in December. And we also have PFOS regulations that are expected in about, from EPA in December. And so then there will be several years to be in compliance with that. So regulatory standard used to be seventy parts per trillion, or that was the guidance standard. They're considering four parts per trillion. We don't know where that is going to be uh, is going to come out. So we're, we're preparing for that. But right now, until we know that number, we can't forecast the cost of what the water treatment plan improvements would be to meet that new standard. So some of the regulatory things that are still out on the horizon are not in our rate increase because we don't know what the numbers are by which to make a reasonable cost estimate for process improvements. Just like the regulatory environment has been kind of new on our uh horizon, so has this inflationary. You know, the COVID hit and then uh supply chain issues and inflation. So most of those inflationary costs, we have already kind of baked those into our O and M costs. So we've got those relatively levelized. But what we're beginning to anticipate is the impacts of those to our capital construction uh costs coming forward. So that, I think Carl and Joe may mention that. So uh, what we've got, we're proposing a four point nine five percent increase uh for our customers this year. That's the only one we're really asking our board to approve everything else as a forecast in the future. So we just approve one year at a time and then try to make a a forward look at what we see on the horizon. So that's the approach we're taking. So with that, I will hand it off to Carl.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Mayor, like Steve said, my name is Carl Robertson. I'm a CFO of Columbus Water Works. Uh, so at the Water Works, financial planning determines how much revenue we need to maintain, fiscally responsible utility, and we take all factors into account when we create that model. Items such as operations and maintenance, capital, uh, the revenues that we'll have coming in, both operating and non-operating revenues, uh, and then the financial policies. Thank you. Uh, then the financial policies that we need to maintain for our bond rating and our debt coverage uh into the future. The capital spending is focused on renewal of aging infrastructure and regulatory compliance. This is our north uh Columbus water treatment facility. So that's where all the water from the city comes from. So what are we looking at? We're looking at a hundred and fifty million in capital invested uh in the city of Columbus between now and twenty twenty-eight in order to provide safe, reliable services, drinking water, and wastewater services for the city. Additionally, we have long-term planning for the south Columbus water treatment facility that Steve was speaking about. Harsh chemicals down there cause higher maintenance costs. Uh, the breakdown of spending, so we fund our capital spending in multiple ways uh between GFO, which is the uh Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, low interest loans. Uh, it's a a federal pass-through loan that we can get. Uh, additionally, we carry bonds, Pago that's budgeted yearly, and our departmental capital. So as we bring this additional debt on, you can see in the bottom chart, we're rolling new debt on as old debt expires, but our overall debt load does increase due to increased cost. So just like every other business and every other person in the community has experienced, uh, if you look at this past ten years, uh, we were able to maintain a relatively flat uh operating cost between two thousand fifteen and twenty twenty. And you can see the spike come in as COVID took off and and the inflationary impacts hit us.
So on that last slide, can you clarify what that is a percentage of?
That's the uh, the percentage of projected increase over between now and twenty twenty-eight that we're using uh to develop our budget for our financial model. So as Steve said, um, increased cost coming up, we plan on adding an additional fifty million dollars in bond in the twenty twenty-six uh due to the inflationary induced capital cost. So that's going to raise what would normally be a sixty million dollar bond to a hundred and ten million dollar bond. That, in order to get there, we're looking at a four point nine five percent rate increase this year. We're projecting a seven point nine five percent increase in twenty twenty-five to account for that bond increase and then dropping back down to our standard four point nine five percent into the horizon. As Steve stated also, we uh, we review that annually. So if we don't need that level of increase, we don't take it and historically we haven't. We understand there's customers within the city that may struggle uh to pay their water bill. So we have two options for those customers. The first is an existing low-income credit plan that provides a monthly eight dollar fifty cent uh credit for qualifying residents. We have two hundred and eighty-one participants in the community that use that. And also we have what's called LIWAP, the Federal Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program. It's provided by, temporary assistance provided by enrichment services and it's based on household size, income, and composition. But to date, we've received over seventeen hundred payments since December of twenty twenty-two and we've been able to provide over one point one million dollars worth of aid for Columbus residents and their water utilities.
Carl, excuse me, Counselor Begley.
On the low-income credit program, if you had to ballpark, what percentage of the participants that are eligible are participating? Like if there's, do you think there's a thousand eligible and only two eighty, two hundred and eighty-one are participating or?
I can't speak on that right now, but I can get back to you uh for sure.
Okay, thank you.
But to dive further into the uh rates and neighboring communities, bringing in Joe Crea. He works with Raftellus. They're a utility rate advisor.
Hey, good evening, everybody. It's great to be back with you again. Um, as Carl mentioned, my name's Joe Crea. I work with a firm uh called Raftellus. Uh, we're a local government consulting firm. We work with hundreds of agencies across the country every year doing this type of work. Um, so we've worked with Columbus uh for over twenty years now in working on these annual rate study uh projects. So we look at, as Steve mentioned, costs going forward, what our revenues look like and make sure we're, we're staying in a, in a financially responsible uh place. So uh, you know, as we work with communities across the country, that gives us kind of the perspective of kind of how things look, um, you know, when we step back uh from just the Columbus area. And what you can see on the screen here, you know, oh, I got a number of things. Okay, forgot there was an animation here. So when we look across the country, um, for a typical customer that uses five hundred cubic feet of water in a month or about three thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons, we would say that their average bill is about seventy dollars uh across the country. If we zoom in a little bit more closely and just focus on communities in the southeastern part of the country, that number shrinks down to about sixty-six dollars a month. Zooming in a little bit more closely to just looking at Georgia, um, water and sewer costs are a little bit cheaper here and so we're down around sixty-two dollars and fifty cents a month. So that's, that's again positive. Uh, and if we think about where Columbus Water Works' current rates are, you can see that uh we're just under forty-nine dollars a month for that level of service. So, you know, on average, we're anywhere from fifteen to twenty dollars below what we see across kind of the industry for, you know, providing clean uh drinking water and making sure that wastewater gets cleaned up and put back into the environment safely. Why there's that difference is if we think back, we, we, you know, take a survey of our clients every year. Historically, over the last ten to twenty years, we've seen over five percent annual rate increases is the, the norm in the water and sewer industry. Columbus Water Works, on the other hand, has been able to maintain the system for rate increases that are on average less than four percent a year, uh, which does create that benefit to Columbus residents. Uh, and when we kind of break it down, you know, three thousand gallons at, at the cost of forty-nine dollars, that's less than two cents for every gallon delivered to your house whenever you want it, sent away down the toilet or drain and cleaned up and put back into the environment safely. So quite a, quite a great um resource and benefit for the community. As Carl mentioned, uh, we're, we're proposing a four point nine five percent rate increase to both water and uh sewer and combined sewer overflow charges. That would be effective January one, twenty twenty-four. This equates to about a two dollar and forty-two cent increase on a typical customer bill uh for, for about half of our customers and less than a, a three dollar and twenty-nine cent increase for the majority of our residential customers. Uh, and you can see the details on this slide here. So what you're looking at are, are typical bills, whether you use five hundred cubic feet or eight hundred cubic feet per month. Those are fairly common and you can see the number of our residential customers who fall into each of those categories. So uh, you know, again, over uh eighty percent of our customers are going to see an increase of about three dollars and twenty-nine cents or less uh per month with this proposed change. When we look kind of across uh the state at some of our communities that we often compare against, when we compare that same bill for what is uh Co- Columbus residents pay versus what we see residents in Savannah, Phoenix City, Macon, Augusta, and Atlanta pay, you can see that Columbus residents are paying less than those neighboring communities. The Columbus affordability rate is when you're a part of that low-income credit program that Carl mentioned. So you get the eight dollar and fifty cent reduction. So again, as, as, you know, being good fiscal stewards has, has kind of had this benefit. Uh, if we look at additional benchmarks across the state, uh, this is based on a statewide database that we have access to. You know, our bill, and this is for a slightly different volume of water. This is four thousand gallons, which is why the numbers are a little different. Uh, the Columbus bill is lower than almost all of the peer communities you see on that comparison there. And the specific charges uh that we are proposing for twenty twenty-four are presented on the screen here. On the water side, you can see that we have a couple of components. One is the fixed uh charge, the base charge, which is based on the size of the connection that a customer has to our system. That charge for most residential customers is the, the five-eighth or three-quarter inch charge, which will be going up from nine thirty-nine to nine eighty-five per month. And then each customer pays a rate based on the quantity of water they consume. Again, most customers are in that, that first block, so going from two dollars uh per unit up to two dollars and ten cents per unit. For the wastewater side, similar structure. We have a, a base charge that's going to be increasing from five eighty-one up to six ten per month. Uh, that's regardless of your meter size uh connection on the water system. And we also have a block rate for uh the wastewater volume as well. It's based on how much water you use and you can see that's going up from three eighty-seven up to four dollars and six cents. The CSO charges are also increasing by that same four point nine five percent as well. So just to kind of summarize it one last time, a four point nine five percent increase effective January one, it's going to add about two forty-two to about half of our customers and then three dollars and twenty-nine cents to uh eighty percent of our residential customer bills. Uh, there's customer assistance options that are available that, that Carl mentioned and you can find more information at, at the Columbus Water Works website.
Uh, Counselor Beg, Begley?
Do you charge the same rates for Muskogee County citizens as well as the neighboring counties that you serve?
No, the wholesale, they pay a higher rate.
Okay. But was, was that right in here or is that?
They get the same as a, the four point nine five is across-the-board rate increase, so they will see a four point nine five on their uh rates as well.
Okay, but that's just not included in the table?
No, no, we didn't put the wholesale. This is primarily focused on the Columbus customers here.
Counselor Barnes?
Mr. Davis, this is a question that I've had many of my constituents ask. This was an issue that came up last time. I'm going to read it from my phone here. So Counselor Barnes, when you asked the question, will the irrigation meter still be fathered in when you cut the water off in the winter? And will Columbus Water Works come back and cut it back on in the spring without a charge?
Yes, we still have that policy in place. Now, they do have to call us to, for us to come back.
You're on the good foot with that answer.
So we cut, if they call us in the fall and say we'd like to cut it off, we cut it off and there's no base charge during that time when it's out. But when they want to start it back up in the spring, they need to call us and we'll come back and, and turn it back on.
Well, you're good to go. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Davis, I think that's all the questions from council. We thank y'all for uh, for coming. Well, hang on, we got Counselor Tucker.
Yes. Have you all um installed any updated meters um during the last um update that you gave, I think myself and Counselor Woodson, talked about some of the meters that we saw when we were at one of the conferences where it actually um will tell you where the water leaky is? Um, it, it, it helps with regulation a, a lot better than some of the older meters. So I was trying to see if you have upgraded.
To the, to the new technology meters that you can look at water consumption in fifteen-minute increments. So if you're, and we've helped a lot of customers, like they may have a toilet that, the flap doesn't seep and so that toilet would be running for a long period of time. So we can tell, look at the data and say, okay, the toilet was flushed at ten thirty last night. It ran all night long. And so if, if you have those kind of problems, they begin to consume water in your house. So we've helped customers with that kind of technology on, on uh, on some of their leaks and things like that.
Would, would you say that you have done like ten percent, twenty-five percent, fifty percent?
The whole, the whole system is that way.
So now the whole system?
We're, we're fully uh, fully engaged with, you ride by with these devices and it just pings, drive by with a truck that has a receiver and it just pings the meter read data. It used to be you had to have numerous people walking, taking the lid off, reading it. Now it is a much more technological efficient way. And not only do we collect the data quicker, now we've got the, the richness of the data to help customers see if they got a leak, how much, and, and things of that nature.
So what's the process, say, for shotgun houses um on Nina Street? That's your district area, that have um water bills close to four hundred, five hundred dollars? What's, what's the process for them? Because it doesn't seem like they are under this new technology where they can figure out that, hey, the leak is coming from.
Call us and we'll send typically our customer advocate or somebody in our meter group to go out and look at their data with them. And typically it would probably be a leak on the customer side. You know, it's going through the meter and that water is being consumed. And we do have a policy where if you demonstrate you had a leak and you fix the leak, we will make a one-third adjustment back off of your water bill. So we try to help you out. We don't want to see that water being wasted. We certainly don't want to see our customers paying for water that they're not using. So we're, if they call us, we will come out and, and try to help them troubleshoot their problem.
Yeah.
Now, we can't fix plumbing problems on the customer side, but they can get a plumber to help with that. But at least we could help them say, yeah, you got a problem. And sometimes we can identify it as a toilet or, or some of those simple things. So, or there's water coming up in your backyard somewhere, so there's a source of your leak.
I think one of the benefits of that technology is they didn't have to call. It would be an automatic, you know, um, kind of like ping to let them know that um they have a water issue and it'd be a lot more user-friendly.
Limits set up in our data where if we get an unusual variation in a customer's uh normal consumption, then it'll, it'll flag so we can follow up and then we'll let that customer know it appears you may have a leak or they may have been doing something that, that they could justify that added water consumption. But we do.
Okay.
We, we have that, our computer set up to notify us of those kind of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Carl, thank y'all. Joe?
Thank you.
All right. And uh, before we go to the city attorney's agenda, I wanted to uh ask you to join me congratulating Walker Garrett, who's named uh one of Forty Under Forty by Georgia Trend Magazine, along with Austin Autton, Katie Bishop, Ashley, and I always mess up Ashley's name uh from Visit Columbus Way, and I, I will try, and Becca Zajak. But congratulations to Counselor Garrett for letting me. That was worth it just to see you turn red. All right, Mr. Uh, City Attorney, if you hit your light, we'll get, hit it one more time, please, sir. It didn't stay. Push the light again. Chris, can you turn that on? We're having some problems with.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Got a business agenda that's uh about medium length. We needed several votes from council tonight. First one up is a zoning item at Bascom Court. This was delayed and then brought back on first reading last time. As an applicant here, this is uh one nineteen Bascom Court.
Counselor Davis?
I make a motion for denial. I think the applicant is pulling the uh application. Uh, I think the prospect buyer went away.
All right, there's, there's a motion to deny by Counselor Davis, second from Counselor Crabbe. Any discussion? Uh, if you would, um, cue it. Counselors, you'll vote no on this. You'll, no, I'm sorry. There's a motion to deny. Vote green.
Yeah, you vote yes, it'll be defeated.
Yep. All right, that's approved unanimously. All right, that's approved unanimously.
All right, that petition is denied. The second zoning item is the UDO text change. This was on the board historic review criteria on painting, but it is ready for a vote.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Chris, if you'll put it on the screen, counselors, you can register your votes, please. All right, and it's approved.
All right. Next one is thirty-six seventeen Second Avenue, going to single family.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Please cue that vote, and we'll let counselors enter theirs.
Okay, that passed. Next item is the rezoning at nine ten Talbotan Road, going to residential office.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All right, if you'll put it on the screen, counselors. That's approved.
Okay. And we've got the demolition ordinance last time with the seven properties listed. It's ready for action.
Motion second to approve the demolition list. Any discussion on any of those? All right, please cue it, counselors. Any votes? So, and that's approved.
All right. Next one was adding the two members to the Liberty Theater Cultural Arts Center Advisory Board. Ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All right, Chris? All right, and it's approved.
All right, the next ordinance is just the first reading. Were any discussion on, will suspend enforcement of penalty and interest on business license occupation tax due for years 2023 and prior through the end of this year, December thirty-one? In other words, penalty and interest will not accrue during the time period from, assuming this is passed on November seventh through the end of the year. And there may be a counselor that has a pending business license, and on November seventh, when this comes back for a vote, you may want to just recuse at that time if you have a pending, a pending business license. But it's up for any other discussion.
All right, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Attorney, would you explain how this is going to work? What does the, what does the taxpayer have to do? What will the tax office do? How, how will this work to, to suspend these penalties and interest?
Well, I just want to.
Because I, I know that we've had a lot of, of folks get notice of penalty and interest, and I want to know how, how will it work so that they'll be able to take advantage of this?
Well, if they have penalty and interest that's already accrued, that's not going away unless this council takes some other action. But penalty and interest from November seventh through December thirty-one will be suspended, and it will not accrue during that time period if you pass this ordinance. But to waive penalty and interest for any particular year, that will take additional action of the council. I don't know if finance wants to, wants to add anything.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Seems like in the past, individuals that could come in front of us and ask for certain things to be waived, and we took it on, and on an individual basis, based on the criteria and what, and the support documents that they provide. Is, do we add that to this motion, or do we just go off precedent?
Well, that's, you're talking about tax refunds, I think, on property tax.
Yeah, it was taxes.
Penalty and interest, so that's a state law that allows a different procedure.
I thought that we had done that for a penalty of some, some kind. I could be confused, but I thought we had, we had, somebody approached us and with penalty charges on something, and, and we waived them. So you think it's taxes?
Property tax. Now, you have done some sort of amnesty, I think, for different fees in the past, but to waive a business license penalty and interest or grant an amnesty, that will take a separate ordinance.
Okay, so that's, so the sponsors of this ordinance will probably get together and, and if necessary, do a second ordinance on that issue.
Well, right, this.
All right.
Any other, any other questions on this one? Just penalty and interest suspension.
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right, well, we'll bring this back in two weeks.
Well, now, there is. Oh, okay, this is on another topic. We'll hit it in a second, when they get through this.
We through with that one?
Yes. Uh, well, Counselor Thomas on this item?
On the, on number seven?
Okay.
This is occupation, uh, business and occupational tax due and owing for years 2023 and prior through November thirty-one, 2023. What, what do you mean by prior to the year 2023?
Right, any prior year where there may have a penalty and interest pending or this current calendar year. It would suspend all of those until the end of this year, December thirty-one. And it doesn't mean, like I said, anything already accrued is not going away unless this council takes other action to waive something.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Before we move on, I think Counselor Kogle had a question about a separate issue.
It's in, in relation to the motion, or not to the motion, to the, to the ordinance. As you know, we've have an internal audit that's going on, as well as a investigation with Troutman and Pepper. And I think council is pretty aware that there's been some concerns that have arisen. And so as for the charter, section four, three oh seven, number five, I'd like to make a motion that the city manager personally provide a three to five page executive summary on what is happening in the finance department, the occupational taxes, and the business license department, the status, the management failures, and systematic problems that have occurred and are reoccurring, the practices and authorizations of the citations and/or the delinquency notices that have been directed at the businesses, who issued and authorized those notices, why the businesses were not, that were delinquent, were not contacted, and why those delay, why there was delays in those collections. And we would like that report finished no later than COB on October thirtieth, which is Monday. And that's my motion.
Oh, that's a motion? Okay. All right, well, there's a motion to ask the city manager to bring a report on the, on the licensing division. Is there a second? All right. To the motion. Counselor Huff?
First question is, how did we get to this point of it being so public? And why does he only have, today's the twenty-four?
Well, I think we're getting close to the end of our audit, and so it's important that we have all sides of the stories that are going on right now, all, all sides of the opinions and all, all points of views that are not, not skewed by anybody or anything. And so if we can just put that out there, and we can gather all the information separately, I think that's beneficial for everyone involved. Everyone involved is the citizens, council, for businesses in the city.
Wouldn't he need more time to give you your adequate report?
I don't think so. I mean, it's just three to five page executive summary.
And, you know, that's part of the audit, is that there's a response from the, from the government, from the individuals anyway. So I, I mean, that's, that's embedded in the audit process. So, all right, Mr. Hughley?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I, I need clarity in what has been requested. And of course, it is known that there is an internal audit going on in the finance department. I know that members of this council brought in outside resources, as I understand it. And I heard that the council member referred to Troutman and Pepper, and I heard the word investigation used. And, but there's an internal audit of finance department. And so I will be happy to have finance, our finance director, Angelica Alexander, bring the three to five page. I believe you referenced it. I can't, I don't recall how you referenced what you're asking for. And, and I don't know the extent of, typically, when there's an internal audit or an audit, there's an entrance interview, there's communications through, communication through the process, and then there is an exit interview, and audit report is delivered to the appropriate agency. In this case, our finance director, I don't believe our finance director has received an audit report from the external auditor or from the investigation or from the outside auditors. Certainly, I have not received any communication, no interview, no communication from any person. And so I have no information about what has been referenced as investigation or outside audit report. And so zero communication with me, no interview, no, no one has said a word to me. I don't know the extent of what has been communicated. And, and I say that because as chief operating officer, no one has communicated with me. It is one of my departments, the finance department, who reports to a deputy city manager, deputy city manager Pam Hodge, who reports to me. And I don't believe deputy city manager Hodge, I don't know that she's received any communication at all. And so I know there's been limited, from what I understand, communication with the finance director. And so, and I don't believe the finance director has been privileged to communicate anything outside of what's being discussed with her. And so I will get with the deputy city manager and get with the finance director, and will bring you a three-page report that should not be construed with a response to any audit or investigation. When I heard here that they're going to come simultaneously, I presume that means that on the thirty-first, there's going to be some presentation.
Well, I, I think what we're looking for specifically under the powers and duties of the, of the charter, the city manager, under the subject and direction of the mayor shall, and section four dash thirty, three oh seven, number five, reads, prepare and make such reports concerning the, the operations of departments, offices, agencies, consolidated government, subject to the city manager's direction, supervision, that has, that may be required by mayor or by the council. And so the council is asking for that report, and if you don't, if you're not aware of anything that's going on in that department, then that would be appropriate to include. But I do think it is important, and council would like to see that come personally from you and not from staff.
No, I, I heard you say that the audit results are coming.
It has nothing to do with the audit, and it has nothing to do with the.
Counselor, just let him respond.
I, I heard you say an audit, an investigation result is coming, and you want to hear both sides of the story. I, I believe that's what I heard you say. Well, you can't hear a side of a story from me, from an audit or an investigation, if I don't have any information related to the audit or investigation.
Well, I'm sure that you're aware of the things that are going on in, in the department, and we just want to know what you, where, where you stand on that as the, as the chief operating officer of, of the department, so.
Well, now, I will.
That's my motion, and I think there's a second on the table.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is discussion.
So I'm happy to have the finance director bring a report back. It's her department, and she will bring a report back to you based on your request. And, and so, yeah, based on the charter, that's to be expected around the city manager. But you have tied it to and referenced it to an audit and an investigation, and that's where I want clarity.
It has nothing to do with the audit or the investigation. It's just what?
I thought you said you've got.
I said there's an audit that's going, an internal audit that's going on, and there's an investigation as well going on by our, by a third party. And we just want to know from your perspective, what, how the business, how the business office and the business license office is working since we've been, since businesses have reached out to us in concerns to delinquency notices, to not receiving business licenses, to receiving citations on site for not having their business license, even though it's been, they've been submitted, to, to having business licenses that they've submitted payments for before. And so we just want some clarity on what's, on what's happening, and, and since that falls under your office, we would, would like that directly from you.
Directly from me?
Yes.
I will bring you a report from the finance department on the information you requested. It will come from the director through the deputy city manager to me, and I will be happy to present that to you on, we'll send it to you, as you indicated, on October thirtieth.
All right, we've got a couple of other counselors waiting. Counselor Thomas?
Counselor Kogle, would you reread your motion to the part that says what you are asking to be included in this report? The various items that you are asking to be included in this report?
Sure. An executive summary on what is going on in the finance department, occupational and business license departments, the, its status, the management failures and its systematic problems that have occurred and that are reoccurring, the practices and authorizations of citations and/or delinquency notices directed at businesses, who issued and authorized those notices, why businesses were not delinquent, why businesses that were not delinquent were contacted, and why we are delayed in collections.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Begley?
Since we've engaged a third party, can we hear from that third party about their recommended process before we vote? Because I, I don't want, we've engaged someone who, who goes through this, and I, I wouldn't want to do something that contradicts their suggestions.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I think we're getting confused here. This is not a response to the audit. This, this is happening because counselors started getting telephone calls from citizens before we were advised of the issue. from citizens before we were advised of the issue from the city manager. And we're kind of wondering, how did, why did that happen? If, if we were having problems in the finance department with collections and with issuing of business licenses, it, it seems logical that it would have brought, been brought to our attention from the city manager and his staff before we started hearing it from citizens. And so that's what we're asking for. What, the report that probably should have been, we should have received before we started, it started getting so big that we were getting calls from citizens. So let's not get this, this request confused with the audit.
Councillor Begley?
I, I understand it is not a response. Uh, it is related. I also agree it would be nice to have this beforehand, but now that the will's a motion or of a third party, um, I would like to make a motion to delay any kind of vote until we've heard from that third party on their recommended next steps.
All right, there's a motion second to delay, I guess, until we get it, the...
Until, until we receive guidance from the third party as to what their next steps are. What they think is appropriate.
All right, all right. So that's a substitute motion? Cause it hadn't, all right. So there is a motion and a second. Substitute motion to, uh, delay until after the information is received.
Sorry to clarify. And if the third party suggests that this is appropriate before the information is received? That's fine. I just, I would like to hear their guidance as to if this is something they would like to see beforehand or afterwards.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think one of those groups is coming back on the thirty, thirty-first? Is that right? So, I mean, it's a basically a two-week delay. Uh, all right. Any discussion to that substitute motion?
To the motion.
Uh, to the motion. All right. Councillor Davis?
I tried to turn it on, whatever.
Well, I totally disagree with that assessment. You, as being a former CFO, should know about anybody that if the board asks you to make a decision and to give a report, you should do that. You don't question it. It doesn't matter if there's an audit going on or a third party involved. The importance of what's being done is by the charter, being required by the charter. There's some very, very important actions that have been taking place on this matter. All the councillors ask is that somebody made a decision to send out these delinquencies notices. And they did it for a reason. So to play negligent and not that I don't know anything about it, I, I just don't think that that is appropriate at this table. What's been requested has been requested by charter to give a report. Just give a report on the knowledge you know and that's all that needs to take place. We don't know what the audit's going to state. We don't know what the investigative body's going to report. But I do know when the information comes, that it's going to be the right thing to be able to marry up all this information. And so to delay any other further take on this, when there's already been actions involved, the investigative body or the, that we asked to look into this because of the issues and the actions taking place in the community, the concerns by the community. And, uh, uh, to further it, the, the response that's going to come from the audit because of other issues that are going in and counts receivable side of the, of the equation, that there are some concerns. But I think it's important to allow the executive management to report as a council member has requested. There's nothing wrong with that. And matter of fact, it's the right thing to do. You don't delay to let information come out and then you mirror it off of somebody else's information. You don't do that. Just put out a report. That's all we're asking you. Why was there a decision on the mail-out of the delinquencies? Why was there a decision to further penalize the community and to threaten court action that if they didn't pay their penalties and fines, not only today, but past license and other taxes that are out there? I mean, there had to be a reason for that.
Councillor, I think every single individual that is, is, who has received that notice, um, that's the standard practice to send out that delinquency notice. Now, so it, I think you, you, well, you're, one of the situ, one of the issues you have brought up, I think, needs to be addressed, but I think that's what's being addressed with both the investigation, the internal audit. And that is, did some people receive them that had already sent them in and didn't know? But, I mean, I, I think this thing is getting, I, I, I don't like the way it looks, number one, but I just, it's, it's getting more pointed at going after individuals. And, and if we want to find out what the answers are, we're spending good bit of money for that investigator. We have an internal auditor. You quoted some other challenges that internal auditor is not supposed to be sharing that with anybody. I haven't talked to the internal auditor on any of this. So, you know, you were talking about the, she, the internal auditor mentioned some other receivables issues. And that's, I mean, that's, that's a little troubling because we shouldn't be talking to the auditor until they get their work done.
Mayor, I don't know what you're implying, but let's just say, yes, there are standard practices in this government. There are also responsibilities in how you conduct business daily. This body's trying to do its job. So all this is, is trying to get the information so we can determine that. So as far as standard practices, that's really what we're trying to get down to is where's the breakdown? Is that not appropriate to ask? Where's the breakdown? Just provide the executive management.
Tell where the breakdown is.
The executive management should be able to do it. We're asking for a report. And the charter clearly states that that's well within the rights of the council. The council's asking for it.
That's fine. I just think it is completely ill-timed and it, it just frankly doesn't make any sense.
What's happened is kind of unprecedented, Mayor. I've never seen it before.
Heard that word every time we try to advance some personal issue. Councillor Begley?
Again, when, when I served on, when we worked with my board, if we engage an expert, we defer to the advice of that expert. And that's all I'm asking to do. Um, if the expert says this is consistent with the process, I would support it. If the expert says this actually makes my process more complicated, I would not support it. And so we hired an expert. I want to defer to their guidance.
All right. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mayor, I, I agree with councillor Begley. I, i- if it's an urgent issue we want to answer tonight, uh, I would ask, uh, the city, city attorney to call, uh, the, the person that's doing the audit and let's get an answer from him on whether we should go forward with this question. I, I agree with it that, that the charter does allow it. But if you've got an ongoing audit, you really shouldn't interfere and ask for, uh, other, a response may, may, uh, interfere with the audit. Uh, the, the information coming, that it may contradict some of the things that the audit finds. And I, I, I just, I don't think that's a good, a good way to go right now. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, could you call the attorney and ask him how he feels about this situation? And then we could, we could bring this up for a vote later in the meeting?
We can.
Okay. Would the councillor yield to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So councillor Begley, do you?
I, I think we're all...
Withdraw your motion as well until after the conduct? Okay. All right. City Attorney?
Okay, we had one more item, Mayor. This was number eight. Resolution to authorize two temporary non-classified employees, a project manager.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Chris, can you cue that, please? Councillors, you can vote on your... Are we missing anybody? Need one more, I think. Yeah, I know, but we've only, there we go. We got nine now. It's approved.
That passed and we had the request for an executive session, Mayor, on litigation and real estate acquisition and disposal. Um, that'll come later in the meeting. That's all we had.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the, um, public agenda. And reminder, folks that are speaking on the public agenda, you'll have five minutes. Uh, just states your name and your, um, you don't have to give your street address, but just give your state of residence. Uh, and, uh, then if we do, if you're not finished in five minutes, if you want to stick around to the end of the clerk's, uh, agenda in order to complete your comments, you can get an additional three minutes. And if I do tell you that time's up, I apologize if it sounds rude. I don't mean it to. It's just, uh, they've asked me to keep the time. Uh, first is Mr. Timothy Veals regarding cleanup of the neighborhood. Mr. Veals here?
Hey, good evening to everyone. It's Timothy Veil, one zero three nine Brooks Road, Columbia, Georgia, three one nine oh three. Well, my concern is, uh, still about the lack of making proper owner and home owner, keeping their property clean. Also, by doing that, that eliminate a lot of litter people throwing out in the street. So they know how to clean up their house or their property. To me, that, that'd be less limit on throwing trash out in the street. Also, uh, on Watson Road, ten sixty-four and Head Three, 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 three nine. Got two contractors working right there. You know, when they get through, uh, get, get the bill ball and do what they gotta do. I called the city council, uh, uh, what do you call it, uh, whoever handling the property. We ain't go to board, Mayor. I don't never get no call back. They get their trash, they throw it outside the creek. I go there, pick it up and they, they the same way. I even left some trash bag out there so they can throw the trash in. Then they put the trash out of the road like, uh, sheep walking, put it out of the road. Just sitting there for months and years. Too many, too many. That don't make any sense. So basically in cold, I call them, they don't never call me back. They, you, uh, you can call them, but now they go straight to the board, Mayor. I get they got my phone number. I get they know when I'm calling. And, uh, also, uh, also to me, they need to put a, a camera on Head Three. Because if I don't go out there four days out of week, pick up a trash, it look like a landfill. The landfill that been, been Head Three, for real. Landfill look been there. Also, I call about the ditch need be cut. Now, I don't know how y'all grab grow, but that ditch need to be cut more than two time out of year. You know, cause they told me they require to cut it two time out of year. So at, at least by, year of month, I said, at least I'll do it at least about eight time out of year. You know, cause the grass, you know, gets so high. And also now, I do appreciate, uh, about the new, about the new street, been working on the street during the, during and around the community, but they ain't do all of them, but I, 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 I take that. So they real, that been real night. But too many four days around the city, Pope Benner Road, Benner Drive, too many, too many. We, we don't get enough service. And, and too many, and, and the city need to be tough on, on, uh, on this, uh, this litter. Now they throw it out by the bag. Don't just throw no litter out. They throw it out by the bag. Yeah. And, uh, so I went through, uh, Auburn Park, where they all been dry. Good thing they got somebody picking up trash. I'm amazed a shame. Somebody got to walk through neighborhood, pick up trash. So I'm just saying for that litter part, you know? And so I just think, uh, the city need to be more tough on that. I know a lot of up there need to be taken care of too, but, cause, cause Cedar Road and Pope Benner Drive, Pope Benner Road, yeah, tomorrow, it, it should be a whole lot better than what it is. And also, uh, yeah, like on Youngman Creek, you know, I'm talking about the cream ready by the Spencer High School, them silver station. I'm talking about filter around there. You have people hanging around there like this, uh, like it a junkyard. Some junkyard look better than so many people yard. Them silver station, you know, you, you know, red car from, from the school, you know, it look, it look like a junkyard. So they clean over one time out of month, then all of a sudden, next six months, it look like a hog pen. So I think the city need to do a better job on that. And also like, uh, a better job on answering the phone when they called in, you know, at least after the phone. But that's basically what I had to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Veils. All right, next is Mr. Norman Easterbrook, representing the River Center for the Performing Arts and Plans for the New Judicial Building.
I'm Norman Easterbrook. I live in Columbus, Georgia, and I'm executive director of the River Center in Uptown. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I've been asked a number of times about River Center's position of the judicial building and I thought it would be useful to share this with council. River Center stands with the preservation of the historic fabric of our community, especially in matters related to the cultural and performing arts. Anyone who enjoys or works in the Columbus Cultural Arts Community is benefiting from the hard work and investment made by generations of visionaries who understood the importance of the thriving cultural arts and entertainment community and the quality of life in Columbus. Physical structures are key to memorializing this heritage and this includes the Liberty Theater, the Springer Opera House, and yes, the now demolished Three Arts Theater. Three Arts Theater has its place in River Center where on our conference room wall hangs a plaque from that facility reminding us of the visionaries that worked to preserve the long, rich history of arts and entertainment in Columbus. Each of these edifices are physical reminders to future generations of our community's longstanding commitment to a thriving art and entertainment cultural community. We are interested in and concerned about the aesthetics and physical approach, not simply to River Center, but to an area of Uptown that has come known as a cultural corridor, an entryway to seven active stages in three buildings, two major art galleries and other spaces that house art and entertainment, all within a seven-block radius. Our philosophy at River Center is that the patron experience begins not at the door to the facility, but at the curb. We invest significant resources in making sure that the outer appearance of our facility, the median, at the parking garage and spaces around the theater are well landscaped, well-kept and well, and clean. Architectural design, well-planned parking and traffic flow and well-kept green space, each are critical to the character of this area and hence to the enjoyment of the residents, visitors and our audiences. In addition to mitigating any physical and environmental impact on River Center's structure, dust, vibration, possible interruption of utility service, our most pressing concern relates to the construction process, its planning and scheduling. Despite every best effort, no construction project, large or small, uh, goes according to plan. For this reason, we feel it critical that River Center not only be informed of production schedules, but included and consulted with an eye to accommodating River Center's production needs. The nature of our work requires that we make commitments as many as three years in advance. We anticipate dozens of performances in the coming months to require, by contract, completely unobstructed access to our loading dock and all theater parking for tractor trailers and other vehicles to park and maneuver. Daily traffic studies may not provide the complete data to anticipate this access. Access clauses carry penalties from delay of curtain time to monetary assessments and cancellation. Cancellation can cost River Center up to $100,000 or more per occurrence. We are now in negotiation for five, uh, tour originations into the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, each requiring this type of access for days at a time. Upcoming is the Georgia Thesmian Conference in February with six thousand in attendance with pedestrians, buses and trucks circulating to all venues in Uptown. Three multi-day national dance competitions in February, March and April. The Miss Georgia competition in June and in July, a national pageant. The scale of Miss Georgia will be coming to River Center. All of these have, uh, tight daily technical production schedules for the weeks that they are housed in River Center. Now, all of these events, together with our tour launches, not only are important to River Center's success, but represent millions of dollars in our mission to generate economic activity in our community. Our hope is that the project management for the judicial building will understand the importance of communicating with and partnering with River Center throughout the project and that we will have ready access to project management to resolve any issues that might arise, not on a daily basis or a weekly basis, but as they arise, since our production activity takes place all hours of the day, seven days a week. We understand the financial and practical reasons to proceed with the judicial building project with urgency. And we support moving this project forward to achieve the highest and best for our community. We support frequent collegial communication between all parties involved. To that end, we offer our facility as a meeting space immediately adjacent to the project site as often as needed for those conversations to take place and to inform the community about the project and to do anything else in our power that we can for us all to achieve success. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. And I'll, I'll just mention that I know you, you have graciously offered up your, your, uh, facility for, uh, meetings there. I think there's one scheduled. And I know that we're gonna... I think there's one scheduled, and I know that we're gonna, and we'll pledge to you that not only will we continue to have ongoing regular meetings to be able to give the calendar for what's coming that next week or two weeks or whatever, whatever timeline we all agree on, but they'll also let you know of any minute by minute interruptions. But they've assured us that there will not be any blocking of the access specifically by the tractor trailers to the loading zones. They are gonna keep the roads open. The design team has been very clear about the pains that they're committing to to make sure that everybody has access at all times to theaters. But thank you, sir. All right, next is Mr. Jose V. Ruiz, Ruiz, request, I'm sorry?
He has canceled.
He has canceled. Okay. Next is Mr. Marvin Broadwater, Senior, regarding vetting citizens' presentations appearing before city council. Ms. Broadwater?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, Madam City Attorney, staff and citizens of Scogee County. My name is Marvin Broadwater, Senior. I reside in Columbus, Georgia. As always, I begin my appearance before you with thank you for your continued servant leadership in making this a better community. I'm here tonight to ask that you establish some type of decorum or more stringent rules for those speaking at this meeting from this podium. Mr. Mayor, while I have appeared before you on a plethora of occasions, to my recollection, I have never made slanderous, erroneous, or liable statements to an elected official, appointed personnel, or any person working for our city government. I still remember my first time addressing this body. The namesake on this building, Mr. C.E. Redd McDaniel, approached me after it and stated, "Mr. Broadwater, you have gumption." While Councilman McDaniel and I may have disagreed on a plethora of subjects, the one thing I thought we had was a mutual respect for each other's opinion, and he never embarrassed me, nor I embarrassed him from our respective position. Mr. Mayor, at your first meeting this month, I observed a young man come to this podium and tried to embarrass our city manager, and was allowed to continue to make slanderous and liable statements from this podium. Furthermore, he made statements about my fraternity and a program I am associated with. Mr. Mayor, I would publicly like to thank you for attempting to correct any statements he made, but the damage had already been done. We all know this is a public political plea or ploy with certain folks to damage the city manager's reputation. Now, let me set the record straight. I would never associate myself, the city manager, or any program I am associated with with any wrongdoing. In fact, four weeks ago, the program in question was named the number one mentoring program in the state of Georgia out of 52 communities. Going forward, I say to this council and this community, every time someone comes here and criticizes our city manager, to consider the real reason they are. That is political. This must stop now. Keep the political campaigns, the political rhetoric out of our council meetings. The military taught me to address the, whenever I address a problem, an issue, or concern, I should always bring a solution to the table. The solution is that the chair, Mr. Mayor, should have the ability to turn off a speaker's microphone once a speaker goes off the deep end. In the previous meeting, the speaker in question was allowed to make six slanderous statements in closing. Those that said, "If you do this, Mr. Broadwater, you are suppressing my First Amendment rights." I would ask our leaders and citizens to consider the case of Brandon Berg versus Ohio, 1969. If I walk into a crowded movie theater right now and yell, "Fire!", everyone get out, and there is no fire, I could be arrested and held liable if damage is done to a person or property as a result of me yelling, "Fire!" It's no different what that young man did here. In other words, just because you can, Mr. Mayor, doesn't mean you shouldn't. I plead and implore you to make this a watershed moment in the history of Columbus, Georgia, for all who approach this podium in true citizenship fashion, and for those who truly love and respect not some of the citizens in this city, all of the citizens, regardless of their political affiliation. All people have one thing in common, and that is their reputation, period. And when you someone comes to this podium and says that we've done something wrong, I have a problem. And I want my three minutes after this. I'll come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater. Thank you for your comments. All right. Next is Mr. Paul Pierce, representing Springer Opera House regarding the judicial center design.
Good evening, friends. I'm Paul Pierce, 103 10th Street. First, I want to just say, this meeting, if we needed any reminder, what you're due, due for our city is complex. It's hard, and I honor it. Thank you for your great service to our city. I appear today on behalf of the Springer Opera House, a national historic landmark, and the official State Theater of Georgia. The Springer stands in opposition to the current site plan for the proposed judicial center. I would like to share just a few of our deep concerns. First, I'm intimately familiar with the government center, its flaws, its defects, and its virtues. As a member of the 2017-2018 Mayor's Commission on the Government Center, I was part of a study team that examined the maintenance, security, and operational challenges for all 277,632 square feet of the facility. The commission included judges, the sheriff's department, city staff, elected officials, neighbors, and historic preservationists. The commission explored the benefits and liabilities of renovation versus new construction, of judicial versus nonjudicial functions, of using the current site versus a new location. We learned about the historic importance of the courthouse block since the city grid was first laid out in 1828, and we heard how conditions downtown have changed with the flowering of the historic preservation movement. We discussed the importance of 10th Street as the key gateway into downtown, the cultural district, and the riverfront. We heard about the decision by River Center architects to mirror the government center green space, creating a lush band of trees and lawn all the way from Second Avenue to Broadway. The final project of the Government Center Commission was the presentation of four community forums in which architects presented spec concepts allowing citizens to react. I would like to compliment SLAM, our architects, for their thoughtful work on the original judicial center design presented to the voters for the 2021 SPOLOST campaign and for the inspired update of that plan released one year ago. Both of those SLAM renderings demonstrated an elegant composition of space and proportion. They placed the main building at the center of the site as per GSA security guidelines, while preserving the broad green space between Second Avenue and Broadway. SLAM's update of last September reflected a sensitivity to the community's character and its aspirations for the future. Once the 2022 rendering was released, I breathed a sigh of relief, feeling that our commission's service to the city had been meaningful. Unfortunately, that relief turned to distress in July, when I was contacted by two judges who had seen the new site plan and were concerned for the Springer. After obtaining a version of that plan, I shared it with our board, which was understandably alarmed. I then contacted Mayor Henderson and City Manager Hughley to express the Springer's concerns. Mayor Henderson assured me that the design was, quote, "fluid" and that our voice would be heard. Likewise, City Manager Hughley expressed that the Springer would, quote, "not be left on the sidelines." Both assured me that they would be in touch. A month passed, and one of our board members alerted me that the next day's council agenda included a judicial center presentation. Of course, I attended and discovered that our worst fears were being realized. SLAM presented a design that was vastly different from their renderings of 2021 and 2022, with features that were wholly unacceptable to the Springer. Unlike the SLAM designs of 21 and 22, the new site plan is awkward, uninspiring, and ignores the fundamental realities of the surrounding urban ecosystem. It turns a street with regular freight train traffic into a primary transportation artery while disrupting, disrupting the architectural rhythm of Columbus's 10th Street cultural corridor. Now, some have said that it's too late to make changes. Well, it may seem late to some, but for those of us just learning about the recent changes to the 2022 plan, it's still quite early. I would like to thank Mayor Henderson for, thank you for the warning, for reassuring us that the SLAM plan is indeed fluid, and for organizing a workshop with SLAM architects and the stakeholders next Monday. I'm optimistic that together we can create a temple to justice that we can all be proud of.
Mr. Pierce, thank you.
It's never too late to do the right thing.
Mr. Pierce, we appreciate you. And by the way, I do, I do want to make clear to folks that are listening, the reason that you hadn't heard from us is we didn't have a plan. We had gone back to the judges, the same judges that told you that it was not gonna work. We were trying to help them see where we were thinking and where we were headed, or the SLAM was, and try to get them to approve or buy into what we were looking at doing. It's not finished. So as soon as that was done, we, we want to communicate with y'all. We're gonna have those regular meetings. You'll have input, just as the city manager and I told you. So we're, we're looking forward to the continued discourse about, about how to, how to try to find a way that makes everybody feel good about where, where that building's going.
Thank you, Mayor. We look forward to meeting with SLAM and the other stakeholders on Monday.
Yes, sir.
And rolling up our sleeves and doing something wonderful for our city.
Thank you.
I, I've got some, some handouts here.
If you want to give them to the clerk, she'll pass them out.
Clerk of Council?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. All right. Next is Mr. Trinidad Villegas, presenting out, representing Outdoor Solutions regarding the Purchasing Division.
Good evening. My name is Trinidad Villegas. I also go by Tony. I reside here in Columbus, Georgia, and I own Outdoor Solutions, which is a business located in Columbus. I'm here to discuss the RFP that is being presented by Purchasing, 24-008, for grounds maintenance. I wanted to first start by saying that we have been a selected and approved vendor with the City of Columbus since 2001, and for 23 years, we have serviced gateway, rightways, medians, parks, cemeteries for the City of Columbus. In the last five years, our contract has increased annually, and in June of this year, we were asked to perform and compensated for additional work with the city that was not in our current contract. At the end of July, we inquired about the status of the RFP to obtain the results and to see if we were being awarded any work with the City of Columbus. We did not receive notification of recommendations, awards, or issuance from Purchasing, but instead found out online that it had been presented to council for approval. Upon finding this out, I reached out directly to Purchasing Manager Andrea McCorvey to dispute and discuss the evaluation process to get a better understanding of the scoring that was used in the selection. During this time, she had suggested that they were delayed on sending that information out and would follow back up with me. We continued to have dialogue through emails and phone calls regarding the matter until I requested an in-person meeting. The city manager, finance director, legal representative, as well as members of Public Works, were on the email thread regarding the meeting. I met with Ms. McCorvey at time, at the time, and I met, mentioned several issues with the code of ordinances and the items that were not followed pertaining to those codes. Of those, the recommendation to award the contract to a city employee was mostly in focus. I pointed out that Purchasing had not followed the codes of ordinances that govern these practices. I indicated that this vendor did not have the state required licensing for pesticides, nor was he registered as an entity with the Secretary of State. I asked at this time if Purchasing had executed the contract, and I told that they had been given the authority to execute the agreement by council. At this meeting, I also questioned the scoring process, the aggressive evaluator, the fact that our proposal would have saved this community $600,000 annually. Our previous scoring, the relationship, and the bias of the evaluator on the committee as one of these evaluators was on the Fire Department, the same division as the city employee that was being recommended. Tonight, you're gonna be presented with a proposal to recommend the approval of a vendor that recently had their contract canceled due to the fact that they were an employee and Purchasing did not disclose this information to the city council prior to seeking approval. Also, within that information, Purchasing is indicating that Four Seasons Lawn Care, the recommended vendor, did not disclose that he was an employee. But in fact, I have documentation from both previous and past employees in the Public Works Department that know that Mr. Holmes, the owner of Four Seasons Lawn Care, was in fact a city employee, and he had been working with the Fire Department when he was awarded the previous RFP in 2017. This gentleman has been operating for the previous five years as a contractor for the city under this RFP, and he has been an employee, but I'm pretty sure Purchasing probably has not made you aware of that. It appears that Purchasing and the Finance Department seem to pick and choose the codes and ordinances in which they abide by, the information that they present to council, and the rules in which they govern themselves by. Here's some other items that I'm pretty sure Purchasing hasn't made you aware of. Our proposal was for $1.8 million annually. The proposed budget for the proposal tonight is $2.4 million, saving taxpayers $600,000 annually over a three mil, over, over $3 million for the duration of the length of the contract had they have selected us as a vendor. We have done work for the city for 23 years. We are certified minority owned business, and we're being passed over for this opportunity. They have no formal write-ups for our community to validate the scoring or the evaluation they provided. That we questioned the initial RFP, that they selectively awarded it to an out-of-town private equity firm from Birmingham, Alabama, and they did not allow us to stay in place procurement violating another code of ordinances. That they executed the contract while I discussed these issues and flaws along with the process with a complete lack of due diligence, any vetting of the vendor selected, and a bias in which they made and validated their decisions. These items were presented to Purchasing, and Purchasing didn't do anything. They defiantly moved forward without any accountability or responsibility, both the previous RFP that was awarded, as well as the recommend, I requested more time at the, the end of the session.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll be glad to grant that to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, sir. I see, I'm trying to look at the item number. Your purchase, B, City Manager. Can we just discuss that now? If you, okay. I think that will help with those concerns. Is this the same one where we included the Fire Department? The additional money for the Fire Department?
Would be under this contract, yes.
The same manager?
Ms. Mayor, I'd like for the Finance Director, and I see the Purchasing Director is in back of the room, to come forward and, and explain this item on my agenda. And I would say to Mr. Villegas, thank you for your service to the city. I believe you indicated you've been doing it for some years now. But I would like for them to respond to what they've heard from Mr. Villegas.
Excuse me. Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. City Manager. I would really like for the Purchasing Manager, she is under the direction of the Finance Director, but I really would like for you all to hear from her, as well as Public Works. But as far as I understand it, sometime, or for some time, I should say, there have been issues with Public Works and this particular vendor. There were, the contract management is within the purchasing division. We were notified of some issues with this particular contractor, and so, and so, as of September of '22, we informed the vendor to submit a timeline and description in reference to a plan of action. The plan of action was provided by the vendor. This was all sort of subsequent, or I should say, in tandem to the next RFP being presented. So, I'd really like for Purchasing Manager Andrea McCorvey to really speak towards the RFP process, because she's more intimately involved than I am. So, Ms. Andrea?
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, thank you for the opportunity to give you a more explanation about this situation. First of all, Purchasing does not decide on who to award a contract to. I want to make that point. Especially in an RFP process, it is done through a committee. It is not done by Purchasing. So, I want to make that point to begin with. Just to give you a quick synopsis of the RFP process, and just so you know, on a couple of occasions, I have been here in council to give an overview of the RFP process, but the meetings ran long, so I never got a chance to do it. So, I'm going to give you a quick and dirty synopsis of the RFP process. First, it begins with the development of the specifications with the department and Purchasing, the user department, who's ever wanting to have this RFP done, we will get with that department and develop the specifications. After that, we ask that user department to provide us the evaluators they want to have on this committee. We have at least five voters, and there can be advisory committee members as well. We look at the names that they've provided to us, and we don't want all of the committee members or voters to be from the same department, from that user department. So, we want a diverse group that has some expertise and some knowledge of what we're trying to purchase. After the RFP has been established, we have our committee. We go ahead and advertise the RFP with the approval of the department. Usually, it's out on the street for fifteen business days. Within those business days, when it's out on the street and advertised, vendors have the opportunity to pull the specifications, submit questions if they have any, and we can provide them clarifications based on the responses we get from the user department. We send those questions to the user department, they answer the questions. We post it as an addendum to every vendor, so all vendors get all the information on the RFP. On the day, due date of the proposals, we receive the proposals. We schedule a pre-evaluation committee meeting. At the pre-evaluation committee meeting, I provide them, the committee, the rules about their participation on the committee. One of the main rules is confidentiality of the process. The other is conflict of interest. Those are two of the main themes. There's some other items as well, but the main thing is confidentiality of the process. The process remains confidential until after the award of the contract. That is the nature of an RFP, because we can negotiate within our review of the proposals. So, we don't share information between vendors about what we receive from any other vendor. Also, at that pre-evaluation committee meeting, the project manager for that department, that user department, will provide an overview of their expectations as a result of the RFP. Then, we will schedule the actual first committee meeting, and it should be enough time between the time that we have that pre-evaluation committee meeting and the first evaluation meeting to allow the committee time to review, thoroughly review the proposals, and come prepared at that first meeting to have active discussion about the proposals received, the good, the bad, the other. Sorry. So, now we're at the first committee meeting. We discuss the proposals, and we find out if the committee has any clarifications that they need from the vendor. Maybe they saw something in the proposals that they did not understand. If that's the case, we reach out to that specific vendor and say, hey, we need this clarification from you on this particular item in your proposal. So, we reach out to the vendors for any clarifications that the committee may need. After the committee has decided they are good to go with the proposals they received, they have no further questions, and need no further clarifications, we move on to evaluate the proposals. Evaluation forms are sent to the voting members. They do an individual evaluation of the proposals based on the grid that's presented in the RFP specifications themselves. So, the vendors know what we're going to be grading them on. So, the committee, the voting members receive their evaluation forms, they prepare their evaluations. Their evaluations are returned to Purchasing. We tabulate the evaluations, the scores, and they have to provide their comments on why they gave the vendor the rating that they gave them. We then have a meeting to discuss the evaluation, the results of the evaluations, and decide on the recommendation to send to Council for approval. So, that's the quick and dirty of an RFP process. It is not Purchasing that make that decision to make any recommendation of any award to Council. It is the committee's recommendation. And that's all laid out to you in the agenda item that we place on the agenda whenever we do any RFP. Now, one thing I want to address, and Mr. Villegas talked about, was that we should have known that a city employee was submitting a proposal. Purchasing did not know. I don't, I don't, I don't work in Public Works, so I don't know that the, I don't work with the vendor, like Public Works Department worked with them. No one informed us that the vendor was a city employee. When we did find out, we conferred with the city attorney, and we found out what needed to happen. And because someone on the committee as an evaluator was also from the same department that that employee worked in, that's when we made the decision to cancel the portion of that contract that was awarded to the city attorney. I mean, I'm sorry, to the city employee. So, we canceled that portion, and what you have on your agenda today is the RFP that resulted from that cancellation. We canceled that portion of his contract and re-advertized it as a new, the sections that he was awarded, and we advertised it as a new RFP, which is on your agenda today for award recommendation. So, we did take action. The statement that we didn't do anything is erroneous. We took action. We took the most appropriate action we could take with advice from the City Attorney's Office. And at the meeting that he referred to, it wasn't just Purchasing that met with him. It was also Public Works representatives who talked about service issues and things of that nature. Mr. Villegas participated in an RFP process, and he simply did not, he was not recommended to be awarded the contract. Now, granted, five years ago and five years prior to that, he participated in the same type of RFP process, and we had none of the complaints that he's received, that he's projecting today. The same quote-unquote "city employee" was also awarded part of the contract five years ago. We didn't receive any information from Mr. Villegas at that time complaining about a city employee being awarded a contract. We have put something in place now, since this has become an issue. We put something in place now in our new RFPs, where anyone submitting a proposal has to state that they are a city employee. And it doesn't say, because we checked with the city attorney. It does not say that a city employee can't submit proposals or submit bids. It says they must let us know, they must inform us that they are. And in turn, we would inform the council. And if you'll see on your agenda today, we have, but the person has resigned from the city. So, that's the other part of it, so I don't know.
So, once, let me be clear, so. So, you consulted the city attorney, and once you learned that this person is an employee of Columbus Fire EMS?
Yes, sir.
And you got advice from the city attorney, you canceled that portion?
Yes, sir.
And then you re-advertized?
Yes, sir.
That bid? That person and his, her company submitted another bid?
Yes, sir. Proposal?
But proposal. And so, when they submitted that proposal, they resigned from Columbus Fire EMS?
They had already resigned before they submitted.
Before they submitted. And so, they submitted their proposal, and because they were not an employee, that person won based on your review team process and all of that.
Went through the same type of?
So, had that person submitted again and disclosed, would they have been allowed to go forward and continue to compete?
Yes, sir.
And they would have because they disclosed.
Correct. They had to disclose.
But prior to that, there was no disclosure.
Correct.
Was there a requirement of disclosure prior to that? No? Okay. So, and so based on that, this Fire EMS employee, like many other Fire EMS employees, they have businesses. They have other business outside of their employment with the city. And this person owns this business?
Yes, sir.
And submitted, and is not an employee, and is being recommended tonight from the selection committee, or valuation committee?
Yes, sir.
Through your office, and it's on my agenda.
Yes, sir.
And so, Mayor and Council, you may have questions of?
Yes, Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I was unaware, and that's the reason why I asked you to bring someone up in reference to the conflict of interest, one. And then, two, had we notified the individual of the complaints that they had received prior to the RFP process? Did they know that they had customers complaining about their work? Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone.
One of my favorite directors. Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
Director, I appreciate you for everything you do.
You're quite welcome. That's what I'm here for. Good evening, everyone. So, one of the things that I started really enforcing when I took over as director was I felt that we were having a lot of vendors that were not doing what they're supposed to do according to contract. So, because of that, I instructed my infrastructure deputy, who's Michelle Brown-Main, she's in the back, to ensure that if we had contracts, that they were documenting what these vendors were doing, whether it was perfect, whether it was substandard, whether it was that we had to follow up on them, et cetera, et cetera. And the reason I started that is because I knew that we had a database in Purchasing that would allow us to be able to obtain that information later on when the contract came up for renewal or for rebid. We would know what the history on that vendor was. You just had a vendor to come up here a couple of months ago, or not even a couple of months, a few weeks ago, on transmissions that I had them to document because they were doing substandard work. And in order to be a good steward, I wanted to make sure that we are documenting it, that the contractors are notified of it, so that they can improve their services and that we can maintain their contract. But if they're not going to do that, my option is, one, to cancel the contract, work with that vendor as much as I can, or continue to allow my staff, who's limited, to continue to run up behind contractors to make sure they're doing their job. We don't have time to do that. If you're being paid that kind of money, we shouldn't even have to call you about something that you should be doing on a standard time based on your contract. So, with that all being said, and let me also say this. When I put this committee together, this was the first time that the fire stations were being added to the grounds maintenance contract. And so, because of that, I felt it was prudent that we had a representative from the Fire Department on this committee. Plus, they served as a department that doesn't have anything to do with the contract. They would be a customer. And if they were having issues, they could let me know as well. And that is how we got a Fire Department person on the committee in the beginning. But with all that being said, this is a notebook of all the emails, texts, and I'm sure there's still others that I don't have in this notebook, with this particular vendor since two thousand and nineteen. I'll be glad to share it with the city manager. He can take it and share it with all of you. But this is the reason why I was so adamant with Purchasing to make sure that all of that data regarding that vendor was in that database and came along with the packages that we receive when we're on a committee. And like Andrea said, I was shocked to find out that it was a city employee. I had no idea that it was a city employee that was applying for a contract. But I would also like to say that we have multiple vendors that are on this contract, not just one vendor. We have multiple vendors. So, that's basically it as it pertains to our complaint system and how we got there.
All right. Thank you.
I have one more question. And I know it's time-consuming. In the future, could we, I guess, create, because I don't know, is this contract just for a year? This one that we're doing right now? I was trying to, it's an annual for the?
It's an annual with one year with the option to renew for four additional one-year periods. So, it's a total five-year contract.
When we go for the option to renew, is it something that we can do to provide feedback to the individuals who receive the contract? That they're either A, performing outstanding, or B, not performing? That way, people won't be caught off guard and think that they're providing quality service, and they'll know upfront that they had several complaints. I don't know what the process is or was, but if it's not that, can we add that level? In the process to let those individuals know that you receive, I made a whole notebook of complaints over a period of time. Is that something that we can do?
Well, there are two things. One is throughout the term of the contract, if a department is having an issue with a contractor, we have a database, it's a vendor performance database, and we ask them to enter that information into the vendor performance database. Understand that we just went into a new updated database, maybe three or four months ago, and the old database had stopped sending us notifications of vendor performance issues. So, we missed a couple that Public Works did put in regarding this contract. But the new database is wonderful now. But what we do when we do get those notifications from the system about an issue with a vendor, we react then, Purchasing does, send a letter to the vendor to notify them that you're not performing this, this, and this as according to the user department. And per the ordinance, they have ten days, excuse me, per the contract, rather. They have ten days to cure an issue, and they have the letter to know how they're going to cure it. In fact, that was something that happened in September of twenty-two on the pre-old contract under which Outdoor Solutions was under, where Public Works and myself, we all met to discuss Outdoor Solutions' performance at that time. And it was prompted by a complaint from Public Works. So, you have that throughout the term of the contract, and then at the renewal, we like to get it before the renewal, because at the renewal time, it's like we've been having problems with it. I'm like, okay, why didn't you say this prior to now, so we could go through the process? So, we like for departments to use that database throughout the term of the year of the contract, throughout the term of the contract. If they have an issue, put it in the system so we can knock it out and take care of it then, and not wait till the renewal time.
Thank you. Appreciate you. City Attorney, I have.
In reference to the conflict of interest, can you provide? I know I definitely would like to see what it states when someone that works for the city, what they can and can't do that may be a conflict of interest when we're, you know, doing the RFP. Because I wasn't aware that city employees could actually be it for RFP.
All right. Is that all, ma'am?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We'll be glad to do that, Counselor. It's pretty cut and dry. It says that any elected official, appointed officer, employee who shall have any private financial interest, direct or indirect, in any contract or matter pending before or within such office, department, or agency shall disclose such private interests to the council. It's a disclosure rule. And then, if the disclosure is not made, another subsection says any It's a disclosure rule, and then if the disclosure is not made, another subsection says any contract to which this code of ethics applies and another party shall be voidable or rescindable at the option of the consolidated government at any time if any elected official, appointed officer, or employee does not, has any interest in the contract and does not disclose such interest in accordance with section two. So, it's a disclosure rule. Even, you know, employees or appointed officials, if they have any interest in any matter, they're supposed to disclose it to the department and the council. And if, if they don't, then that contract can be voided. Yeah, they, they can actually bid on a matter, but on, uh, say, cutting grass at different facilities, but if they're an employee, they must disclose it.
And as, um, the purchasing manager mentioned, um, Counselor Tucker, uh, we did develop a form, um, to make it really sort of plain as day in terms of that disclosure.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. City Manager, I, I think I need to address this to Ms. Andre, uh, but I'd, my question re- is regarding, um, out-of-town, uh, contracts. And I'm, I'm gonna play the Red McDaniel card here, we've, we've always tried to keep, uh, keep the business local. And I understand the bid process and that, but it concerns me when we have somebody with over twenty years' experience with the city. And we set up a process, as was described by, by Ms. Short, to monitor deficiencies and talk about the deficiencies and, and track the deficiencies, and then when they come back up, we, we use that against them. Seems to me we should be, especially with somebody this kind of experience with the city and, and the lands that we, that we maintain, we should be talking to them about the deficiencies. I mean, maybe we are, just, I'm just not real clear on the process, but if we find a deficiency and we put it in a system and we will want them to go in the system and respond, it seems like if we have somebody going out and identifying a deficiency, they should at least go sit down and talk with the vendor and talk, especially with somebody with twenty-plus years' experience with the city.
Yes, you're correct.
It, it just makes sense to me, I mean, that, that's a lot of institutional knowledge there that we're losing when they go out the door. The, uh, the, the person, uh, the, the, the committee selecting the employee and that, that, that to me just, it, it doesn't, it doesn't pass the smell test to me. I, I'm glad you went back and rebid it and, and had everybody come back in, but it, it, to give the contract to somebody out of town really bothers me, especially with the savings, it was, if the savings were accurate that was identified by Mr. Villegas. Uh, that really concerns me, and I, I would like for us to, to go back and look at that again.
So, so this particular company.
We have been emailing for.
No, 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 the one that's on my agenda that you're requesting approval on is local.
Yes.
And, and, and has been doing this work, so they have the experience for some years. This is, they're not new to the table.
No, sir.
So they know what they're doing.
Yes, sir.
And so, um, and, and so from what I see, it's Four Seasons Lawn Care, uh, from Columbus, Georgia. Uh, and, um, you also have an option, um, with, uh, another vendor who is also from Columbus, Georgia. So, all of these are from Columbus?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But just to clarify, Four Seasons is owned by a company out of Birmingham, and this is a branch here.
They bid as a local company.
As, as a local?
Yes, sir, as a local.
It may be a franchise or something?
Um, franchise I'm not aware of, but, um, their business license is in Columbus, Georgia.
Well, but it says in the packet, um, this company was founded in eighty-four in Birmingham, Alabama, and has twenty-three branch operations.
So, so how long, how long have we been doing business with them?
I know they were awarded the, um, contract that was bid in probably seventeen or eighteen, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen.
Well, still, it, it's an out-of-town company, and, you know, when we pay a local company, that money turns over in the community dozens of times. I mean, that's paychecks, that's grocery, that's gas, that's restaurants, that's Little League, soccer, I mean, it, it stays here. Part of this money, part of this three-man villa contract's going to Birmingham. That concerns me.
Well.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, and we, we like to do business local, that's our first priority, obviously. Um, and, um, but, but we do have out-of-town vendors that we do business with. Our, our first priority is to do local. And, and, and we have architectural companies and others will open an office here and, and, and join the chamber, and they are considered local once they do that. It happens all the time. And so, um, we've gone through our process, this team has gone through its process. And, um, it's a local firefighter who, this was important enough too, that this person left his job at Columbus Fire EMS, uh, to take on this responsibility. Um, and so, um, it's a council decision, but the recommendation from the committee or the evaluation selection committee, whatever you call them, uh, and, and the, uh, purchasing division of finances that, uh, we approve this particular vendor. All right, Counselor Crabb?
Thank you. I'm going to, um, go off of what the Mayor Protem mentioned because that kind of, um, stuck out at me on the, what are some of the things that are on the grid? On, that you're, that you're looking at? Is a local company on that grid?
And in our P process, if this is a straight bid, we could, and we could, um, use the, um, local preference. The city does have a local preference, but it's for bids only. You can't use, because it, it's based on the cost. If that's all you're really looking at.
If it's based on the cost.
If all you're looking at is the cost, with a bid, it's just straight cost, whatever the, the vendor's bid, that's it. With an RFP, we can negotiate. We were able to go back on, like, the first RFP, uh, the one that we portioned, that we had canceled, and we asked for a best and final offer, you can't do that with a bid. So with an RFP process, the local preference cannot come into play. Now, we could have given them more points, excuse me, for being a, a DBE, or if you will, a minority-owned business, or a local, or local business, we can start adding that in if that's what the committee or the department would have wished.
Okay, the other thing about the deficiencies, um, the book that you're showing there, twenty-three years, and that's, that's all the, that's the only, that's how thick the book is after twenty-three years?
No, ma'am, I said, when I, when I started as director, I made it a point for all of our vendors, for all of my staff that had contracts to start documenting what they were and were not doing, whether good, bad, or indifferent. For this particular vendor, it goes back to twenty nineteen, only because, as she stated, I think Q Alert started in twenty nineteen, or their system itself was upgraded and changed, but what I have goes back to twenty nineteen.
Okay, I don't know what those deficiencies are, but I want to say this delicately. There's been a lot of deficiencies with your department too that we've brought up to you, and we've allowed you to.
Counselor, we're talking about this vendor, not about the.
I know, but I want, I think that we should be careful on how we handle deficiencies of vendors when we have deficiencies within them. We need to go by the golden rule, you know, that we do unto others as we want them to be done to us, and you want us to, you know, so, I don't know what they are, but I'm hoping that we're giving them the mercy that we want to receive as directors and, and as elected officials. You know, we, we all get, I hope that we're giving them constructive criticism. And I'm trying to be very delicate because I know you're in a tough position, but it has to be brought to the table. And I'm not being critical of you, I'm just asking that we give constructive criticism and that they, these, um, businesses that have done business with us for a long period of time are given some, you know, leeway because they're, of course, they're gonna have deficiencies when a new company that we haven't done business with will not. So it's not an equal.
Well, I don't want you to misunderstand what I'm saying, when I say deficiencies are substandard work, I'm saying that we've identified it, we notified them of it, requested it be brought into compliance or fixed or whatever the case may be. Not that we're just sitting back writing down notes and just filing them away. No, we are doing emails to the individual or to the companies, letting them know that this is something that we found. For example, the GOP came in, there, it required a lot of different things to have to be done at that time that they hadn't done, so we sent them emails. We need this done, we need that done, there were certain things that we asked them to do that they normally wouldn't do. But they were generous and gracious and said, we'll do our best, we'll get this done, we're gonna move it up a week or two weeks to make sure that it's in place. So we are given the grace, and we are giving leniency, and we are most importantly, letting them know where they are falling as far as substandard work is concerned. Because if they don't do it and we get the complaints, and we do, we have to go out there and do it. And I just don't have the, the, the staffing to go behind.
You don't send them back out to do it?
Sometimes we do, depending on what it is and depending on what the complaint is. For an example, the cemeteries, there is a standard that we hold for our cemeteries. We received ser- several concerns regarding cemeteries. We ended up having to send our correctional detail officers into the cemeteries because we were not getting the work done that we needed done. But I don't want you to feel that we're not notifying them because we are, and we are giving them those great periods.
Counselor Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, we still have two people left on the public agenda who've been sitting here for some time to talk. I understand that this, um, is related to, uh, item number eight on the public agenda, and it's also related to a purchase on the city manager's agenda. But I would request that we stop this conversation at this point, go back to the agenda and, uh, allow the two people who are, uh, on the public agenda to continue. This conversation, uh, can be continued, uh, at a later time. I'm, I'm really concerned that, um, we have limited the, the citizen who brought this issue to us to five minutes, and we have now been talking about this without giving that person any chance to rebut or whatever. I, I'm just really, uh, concerned about this. And I am requesting that we stop this conversation at this point and go back to the public agenda.
Well, yes, ma'am, thank you. We, we have, it was requested by a member of council and by the staff to bring this up since we were trying to get the issue resolved with Mr. Villegas here. Mr. Villegas will have an opportunity to respond at the end of the clerk's agenda. So at this point, we just need to know if there's not an action gonna be taken, happy to move on. But if there is a, if there's a motion to approve this individual, uh, well, are you moving that we accept this? Cause we're still on item B. So, if there's a motion to approve this recommendation from, uh, the, the team, then that's what we'll do, if there's not, then we'll move on. All right, well, there's no action, so that item will die for a lack of emotion. So we will move back into the, um, public agenda. All right, next is Mr. Jack Rosenhammer, representing Columbus Street Hockey regarding a proposal for a ball hockey rink to be, be built at Frank Chester.
I think I have a handout going out. Before I begin, I, I promise this will be more interesting than landscaping and.
We're counting on it.
Ms. Davis, can I go first next time, please? You're killing me. This is.
Thank you.
Hey, counselors and Mayor Henderson, this was all emailed to you earlier today, so if the font's too small, it should be in your inbox.
All right, Ms. Rosenhammer, you may begin.
Thank you, sir, um, good evening, Mayor Henderson and city councilors, my name is Jack Rosenhammer and I am a resident of Columbus, Georgia. Um, we are here today, uh, to present our plan to build a ball hockey rink at Frank Chester Recreation Center. Uh, while we were under the assumption that this would be an easy sell, uh, to you all when we show how such a project brings value to our community, um, but if you haven't been paying attention to social media lately, apparently this is actually a very emotional, uh, topic. I'm not sure if Mr. Muckraker is actually here, but when you do your research on the Rosenhammers spelled with two Ms. Uh, now onto the topic at, at hand, um, myself, uh, Mr. Chris Poirier, Mr. Jeremy Delaney, and our other partner, Mr. David Harte, who's, uh, actually at the ice rink coaching right now. Um, we are the founders of Columbus Street Hockey, which we've come here numerous times to, to speak in front of you all. Um, was started as an idea, uh, between four friends back in March, has really, has grown into a flourishing program that has hosted half a dozen pop-up events across Columbus and Fort Moore, and is currently in the middle of its second youth hockey season, actually at Frank, uh, Frank Chester Recreation Center. Um, you can see on slides five and six, some of the community outreach we've done, we did, like I said, we did half a dozen pop-up events across the city, um, we partnered with numerous schools and programs, including the United Way. Um, we even had, you know, Counselor Kogle come out, uh, Reggie Lewis and Cedric Hill of Cure Violence come on out and support us, and even some of Columbus finest played a little street hockey with us at, at, uh, Lake Bottom Park. We, we really wanted to lower the barrier of entry, uh, to a great sport. Um, one of the big issues with hockey is, well, there's two, one, it's incredibly expensive with all the equipment you need and the ice fees and the travel costs, but also access to a facility. Street hockey solves both those problems, you need a stick, it costs twelve dollars. So we've solved our, our barrier to entry when it comes to cost. When it comes to access, we wanted to go out into the community and go where the kids who can't get to an ice rink are. Um, we did that numerous times across South Columbus, including visiting, uh, Michael Flue and Rec Center on May twenty-seventh. And in a very tragic juxtaposition of how something so good and so great, um, can turn so dark and so tragic, a hundred and fourteen days later, a fifteen-year-old boy was killed at that very same basketball court that we played on. Um, this really shows how important it is that we invest in our community, invest in our children, give them healthy activities to keep them occupied, to teach them good values, and they can become good citizens of this great city. So that leads us to our idea. Um, we want to turn four sub-optimally utilized tennis courts at Frank Chester Recreation Center into a ball hockey rink. It'll be a multi-purpose facility where we will also include basketball hoops to be played across the, the actual surface. We also potentially will have it lined for, uh, events like tennis and, uh, everyone's favorite pickleball and even volleyball. Why, why Frank Chester Recreation Center? So, that is the home of our current street hockey league that we have going on right now. Additionally, it's very easily accessible, it's right at the intersection of Benning Drive and Victory Drive. Um, you know, folks from Fort Moore and all across, uh, Columbus and even Opelika and up in La Grange can come down and play at our facility and get there very easily. Um, also, Frank Chester is in South Columbus, and let's just call a spade a spade, there's not a whole lot of investment there. There isn't a whole lot of things for kids to do outside of the recreation centers. We truly believe and embody the values of hockey is for everyone. If we wanted to say that but put it in a better area, we put this off exit twelve, but we're not, we chose to go to Frank Chester. Um, you can see on slide ten, the general macro view of the overall landscape, putting a rink on the larger four, uh, tennis court area and potentially a secondary rink in an open area that has somewhat of a dilapidated handball court that isn't really pop, mostly used. Um, with that, we can actually host tournaments that are actually going on up in La Grange and Macon right now. Um, but we can't do that right now because we don't have these facilities. On slide eleven, you can see the general outlay, the general, um, overlay of how we'll put the rink with our ancillary buildings and office approached off a small concession stand. So our plan is engage in a public-private partnership with the city of Columbus. And precedence for this does exist with CORDA and also, uh, as we understand in the future, with the uptown pickleball courts, where the city donates land and the Columbus Street Hockey Program will maintain, will build and maintain the rink using funds that we raise through private donations and corporate sponsorships. Um, we would, our plan would be for Columbus Street Hockey to reserve the right to schedule our events first, and then all their programs can use the rink. and then all their programs can use the rink whenever, use that multi-purpose facility when we are not using it. Um, our number one partner in this is the Empower Play Project, which I spoke to you about last time we were here. And there are sports initiative dedicated to educating, motivating, empowering kids through sports and helping programs like us raise the money and construct these rinks. The number one way we will build this rink and raise this money is conduct Skate Across Georgia. I think I have eight seconds left, where we will skate four hundred and fifty-one miles connecting all the different hockey communities in the state of Georgia, from Savannah to Augusta to Athens to Macon to La Grange down here in Columbus. So in closing, let's build a rink, let's get kids out playing a sport. I yield the rest of my time for any questions.
Mr. Rosenhammer, thank you. It's, uh, yeah, I, you've been passionate about this since you first appeared at council. And I think you've managed to get, get all the councilors a little bit fired up about it as well. Uh, Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your presentation. Uh, I want to take this back a little bit because I'm feeling a little left out again. I got my Parks and Rec director here. I hadn't been in a meeting with her, with you at the same time. I had a Zoom meeting with you and some others, so I hadn't heard anything since then. And I like what's going on. I love the kids. I love the street hockey. I love all of that. But what I'm having an issue with is from what I read and what we talked about last time. So how many tennis courts are available right now?
So right now, there are eight. There are four that are all adjacent to each other. And there are four other that are two doubles next to each other.
Okay. And you're going to take four of the eight?
Yes.
Okay. And the basketball will be played on the multi-purpose court?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we'll actually add two, it'll be two, so you'll have two at each end, so you can play two games at once or anyone can play pickup, which there is no outdoor basketball facility at Frank Chester, so we'll actually be adding something new in addition to hockey.
Okay. And the softball fields will remain where they are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the monies from the one cent sales tax will be spent to refurbish the softball fields?
I know nothing about that.
I know. I'm, I'm looking. She's right behind you. You're good.
Yes, sir, Counselor. Uh, SPOSS will be used for Benning Park itself, so where the softball fields are, the concession, um, all of that area to, uh, re, uh, reinvigorate it, reform it.
With the increase in softball, they're looking for fields that are a little closer?
Yes.
And better maintained, if you follow me?
Yes.
So that they can come up and down Victory Drive and back and forth?
So our conversation has been, when we get to that, that project under SPOSS funds, is that we will look at the actual softball field, see if we could add more softball fields, actually, um, by redesigning the layout, taking down everything that's there now, um, and seeing if there's a way that we can redesign it in a better way to accommodate more space because we definitely need, um, more fields, whether it be for adult or youth softball. Um, obviously, if we build it for adults, then kids can play there as well. Um, but yes, we definitely need more fields. As you know, that there's, are fields that we use in addition to South Commons. Um, and that's how we are able to bring in some of the larger tournaments. And our concession building, our bathroom, the fencing, the fields themselves, all need to be redone. So all of that would have to be demoed and a new park built in its place. But yes, sir, that's what the SPOSS funding would be set aside for.
Last time I spoke about the larger softball tournament that came to town?
Yes.
And the city rolled out the red carpet as far as advertising and getting everything ready for them. And they had a blast. And they are, they used to come two, maybe three times a year. And they're looking to come multiple more times now because of that. And, uh, so let's go back to beginning. I really need you all.
Yes, sir.
To call me and me. I know everything that you're presenting tonight because I took time to sit down last night about midnight and read through it. You and I talked with a couple of other people on a Zoom call. So is the guy from out of town still involved?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's Empower Play Project. That's, that's, he's the, the person that.
I just don't remember his name and company.
Kelly. Yeah, he, uh, he's just in character.
Okay. So we'll end up with this multi-pur- multi-purpose court that we talked about during the Zoom meeting. Okay, for everybody to benefit from street hockey, tennis, pickleball, basketball and everything.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then to Director Browder, the tennis courts will be there for, uh, CORDA and Girls Inc.
And high school.
Spencer High School, Carver High School, then people, that's what I'm saying. They need a place to play.
Yes, we would maintain the tennis courts, and that's been one of the things, discussion-wise, that we've talked about is that we have to maintain the uses that we currently have. So anything above and beyond that's great for the community, but we can't lose any of the amenities that we already offer to those groups, CORDA, Girls Inc., or the high school, local high school teams. We can't lose our access. So while we're, we don't mind adding, and we agree in adding more sports and more activities and, um, things for children, obviously, we just have to make sure that we maintain the space that we have now, um, even if it's done in a different way. Um, but we can't lose the tennis courts that we currently have.
Okay, okay. Cause I, I personally love the whole idea. I like what you did during the summer. I was a little busy, but still, I kept up. And I know that the people who participated enjoyed it. And it helps to have adults that enjoy what's going on. That brings more kids to the area. So I thank you. I just want to make sure we were still on the same page.
Yes, sir.
Because I hadn't spoken with anyone. So it appeared something else was going on. And I saw something in there that said, the part that you take over that will turn, you will be responsible for it, and the city would turn that over to you at some point or something I've read.
Yes, sir. So.
It'll become yours.
So the, the idea would be, and this is something that Director Browder and I spoke on the phone about today and has, has spoken in the past, um, we can nigh on the actual details, but what we are proposing is that the city would give us, allow us to build the facility on city property. We would maintain the facility, so if the boards or anything inside the fence line is, is broken or needs to be, uh, kept up, that'd be our responsibility. Um, and the only thing that we ask is not that, and Director Browder, she corrected me when I said this today to her. The city of Columbus has the ultimate authority to use anything that's their property, how they see fit. What we would ask, and we just want to, you know, be sure of, is that we put in the work, we build this facility that's built as a deck hockey rink, but is multi-purpose. The city of Columbus doesn't say, okay, thank you, now there's going to be ba- because there's basketball courts, there's going to be basketball there, five to nine P M., five days a week, fifty-two weeks a year. That's the one thing that we are, in total transparency, a little, I wouldn't say nervous of, but a concern to make sure that, hey, we're, this is not one or the other. It's multi-purpose, but it's, it's a hockey facility at the end of the day with the ability to do the tennis and the pickleball. And, um, Kelly and his program Empower Play, they built a rink with, that was lined with volleyball because they had a big volleyball community where they built this in Scottsdale, Arizona. So we can do the same thing. We start a volleyball program there and also have basketball. So we just want to, you know, have the assurances that we build it. We don't all of a sudden go down to the bottom of the barrel of who gets to pick when we get to use it. That's, that's our only. And again, our program is growing. Um, the Skokie County Roller Girls, they need a place to skate. They're more than welcome to skate there. We just want to make sure that it's open for everyone, but it's not to the point where it's not used by, for what we intended it to be used for, at least a good portion of the time.
Okay. Well, going forward, I'm on board.
Yes, sir.
But please, uh, in the next few weeks or so, let's set a meeting with your group.
Yes, sir.
And Director Browder, so we can sit down and talk.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just see it.
Yes, sir.
On the big screen.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to be clear, there's not more time being allotted to Mr. Rosenhammer. It's because he's being asked direct questions by council. Uh, Counselor Thomas?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like for us to, um, uh, ask these, it looks to me like young athletes here to introduce themselves and to tell us what, what sport they play. Could we do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't say any bad words, but listen. Say your name and what team you play for. What's your name?
Harrison.
What team do you play for?
Blues.
There we go. Beautiful.
My name is Audrey.
And what team you play for? Devils.
The Devils.
We gotta work on this. I'm sorry.
My name is Lana.
What team you play for?
Blues.
There you go. Beautiful.
Very good. Ms. Rosenhammer, that's all your time.
Yes, sir.
So we, we appreciate you very much. Exciting idea. Thank you for bringing these athletes with you. And thank all of y'all for being willing to pour into these youngsters, too. We appreciate it very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. And next is Ms. Audrey Holston-Palmore, regarding vacant housing, demolitions, providing information concerning air property in the city. Ms. Palmore, it may be easier if you go to this, you can, yeah, I think that may work better. Chris, can you turn the light on over at the overhead projector? Might be easier. Yes, sir. Chris, do you have control over that? Thank you.
The clock?
Yes, sir.
Where's the timer? Thank you, sir. I don't see the timer.
I think she's trying to get the timer. You looking for the timer?
Timer, yes. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Citizens of Columbus, Georgia, the address of my home is Columbus, Georgia. On the date of September ninth, two thousand twenty-three, the review of the Columbus City Council meeting televised on CCG TV was of a particular interest to me because I am an heir of property within the boundary of Columbus, Georgia. At this time, I'd like to hold up this sheet of paper, um, in regards to the sharing of information of the demolition process here in Columbus, Georgia. I know it can't really be seen, but I will give the confirmation number of the reservation request that I received from the Columbus City Government. The con- this is saying, this right here is saying November. The confirmation number of the information for November is J J nine five six D four nine C B. I'm gonna hold this here for about thirty seconds just in case someone is going to inquire about the confirmation from the Columbus City Government regarding a reservation request that they have received. I'm going to reflect a little more on the demolition, uh, process. And this right, uh, this letter, this notice right here is in particular to heirs that are associated with the property that I will be speaking about. As I stated, I am an heir of property that is located within the boundary of Columbus, Georgia. My grandparents, Mr. Hardy Williams and Mrs. Maddie Pearl Williams, acquired the property in July nineteen forty-six for a family dwelling. The dwelling became a familiar place of safety and enjoyment. In the union of Hardy and Maddie Pearl Williams were four biological offspring. Many elements have adversely caused the dwelling and the demolition department of this consolidated government to be determined uninhabitable. The heirs of the biological, uh, heirs are responsible for what will be done of the acquisition and demolition building of the dwelling located at twenty-nine, twenty-eight, Tenth Street in Columbus, Georgia. The property is for sale. And a new developer, developer can acquire the property for fresh futuristic purposes. Now, at this time, I'm going to hold up, uh, another reservation request that was received through the city government. The confirmation number for December is number A P four two zero eight six three seven three. This, this, this reservation is scheduled for the heirs of the property to come to the Public Safety Center for a meeting regarding the demolition of the property at twenty-nine, twenty-eight, Tenth Street.
I am very sorry, but you, you've used your five minutes.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll.
Can you come back at the end of the meeting after the clerk? You'll get another three minutes.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Counselor Tucker, I'm sorry.
Yes, um, city manager, can you do me a favor? Um, I know we have approved some of the, well, these demolitions. Can we get a list of the dates, um, that they're possibly coming up to be demolished? Um, I had a constituent that sent information, and I think we approved this one house back in either the end of twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one. But just to see where they're, um, falling, so I can let them know that it's either coming up on the demolition, to be demolished, you know, in the next, within the next year or whatever.
So you have a specific property address that we can?
Yeah, it was Carmel Court. Um, I need to get the actual number. I probably can go back to, um, the, the actual council meeting that we had. Twelve oh, it's twelve oh nine, twelve zero nine Carmel Court, um, three one nine oh seven. I think we had approved it back in twenty-twenty-one sometime. Um, I know July, I was sending messages with, um, Mr. Pruitt about it in twen- July twenty-twenty-one timeframe.
I, I'll have them to get a status on that property.
Okay, thank you.
All right, city manager, it's your agenda.
Right. Uh, first, I've got Transit Trust Fund, uh, grant request for electric bus charging and maintenance equipment. There's no match. Two hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
All right, there's a motion, second. Approve, approve all of the grants listed, one, two, three, five and six. All right, there is a second as well. Is there any discussion on any of these grants? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank, and they're approved, Mr.?
Number two is, um, Brownfield Assessment, uh, Grant, um, Rewrite, uh, and, um, Community Reinvestment has worked with Terracan to develop a grant application submitted to EPA, and there's no financial impact on the city, no match required. Uh, number three is a boost grant. Uh, it's two hundred, up to two hundred, uh, approximately two hundred thousand dollars. There's no match. And, um, uh, this, uh, grant provides necessary grant funding for an expanded after-school program, uh, for Parks and Rec, no, no match required on that grant. Uh, I believe you didn't do four, did you?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Number five is a Bright From the Start snack grant, uh, with Parks and Rec. We've had these before. There's no match required. And, um, I believe you did. And I believe you did say six.
Yes.
It's a Georgia Department of Natural Resources grant, recreational trails program. The Friends of Dragonfly Trail will provide the match on this grant. The request is two hundred thousand dollars. Those are the ones that were noted and I believe number four. If you're ready for that one.
Yes, sir.
It's a Maximus Inc. for Georgia Childcare and Parent Services Program. It's a Bright From the Start program grant also. And there's no cost to the city for this grant. It's twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. And these funds will provide an opportunity to offer expanded and improved support for students in the before and after-school program.
Motion second approved. Any discussion? Chris, if you put it on the screen. No, we have it. No, we, it was specifically stated, one, two, three, five, and six. I think we did. When their vote called for the first?
You did all but four and then you just did four separately.
Yeah, we got them. It was a voice vote.
Are we ready to move on?
Yes, item four is approved.
Number seven, donation of supplies.
All right, motion second to approve items seven and eight. Any discussion on either one of those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? If you would explain what those are.
Number seven, donation of supplies, Columbus Police Department from Home Depot for the construction of a K-9 training aid. And that's no cost to the city. And then number eight would be approval requested to accept a bingo blower professional tabletop with a five-foot long clashbowl to be donated to Frank Chester Senior Center. And it's been donated by the Muscoy County Sheriff's Office. And the value is three thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And that's at no cost to the city.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I see the sheriff in the back and I know he's coming up for a presentation later on, but I just wanted to thank him and his office for, one, the donation of the bingo machine, but two, for what you did for the seniors on Friday. It was very special. Got many, actually, I actually got a letter today thanking you all and also Command Sergeant Deshawn Grant. So we always want to just show honor what honors do. And I want to tell the sheriff and his crew and CPD, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So next, I've got purchases, Mr. Mayor. We got retail, excuse me, retail space for porch for the park and ride site on Manchester Expressway. And the vendor is going to do a number of things for port users and there will be a small monthly lease rental fee that they will pay to the city.
Motion second approved. Counselor Krab, assist to the motion? Okay.
I, when I was reading about this, it said that the rents would go into the general fund, but I was wondering if the rents could be, go towards the maintenance of that small park because I've noticed that, you know, the playground equipment needs to be updated and things like that. And so I was hoping that it could be designated to go back to maintaining that building in that area.
Well, the, the rent typically goes to the general fund for any rental proceeds that we receive, whether it be tower lease rental or any other property. And so if it follows a normal process, it would go into the general fund. And when things are needed at that park, like other parks, it will come out of the department budget.
You want to hit your line so we can hear what you're saying? There you go.
That park is generating those funds and so I'd like them to go back into that park. Can we put that into the, into the lease? I would think that that tenant would also like the, that area to be maintained to help bring more business to, you know, more patronage to that business.
And, and so, Mayor, my recommendation would be that we stay consistent with what we currently do with other rental proceeds and not set a new precedent because then something else is going to follow. But as always, it's, you know, the council can make whatever decision they want to make. I recommend we remain consistent.
Well, then I'd like to set a new precedent.
Counselor Begley?
Is the amount in here? Did I miss that?
The amount is not. It's, it's, it's in, because it's a RFP, they would negotiate the rent and the, the rent is not going to be a very large amount. I can tell you that now. It's, it's a very modest rent because of all of the other services that they're providing for, for the users, citizens.
Counselor Krab, would it make a difference once we know the amount? Like, would you want to revisit later once we know the amount? Depending on how old it is?
I don't care what the amount is. I'd like it to, I'd like to set a precedent. I'd like to set a precedent that it goes back to where it's being generated. I mean, that area needs to be taken care of.
Mayor, will be guided by the vote of council.
It's up to council. As it stands right now, though, it's going back into the general fund. All right.
And?
Didn't vote. I'm sorry. Was there, we did have a, okay. There was a motion second to approve A on the purchases. If you put it on the screen, Chris, can we put that up there? Counsel, if you'd vote, make your votes, please. It's approved.
Item B, Mayor, we had some lengthy discussion on ground maintenance services and will be guided by the vote of council.
Okay. Any action desired by council on B? Doesn't appear so. So we'll move on to C.
Okay. Item C, mental health services for the Muscoy County Prison.
Motion second to approve items C and D under the purchases. Any discussion or question about either one of those? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, they are approved.
And D was just a repair of a compactor for Public Works. Those are the purchases. I've got two updates. I've got one from the Trade Center. Haley Tillery is here, the executive director of the Trade Center.
All right, good evening, everyone. I hope you're doing well. Before I start this presentation, I have to just say a few words first. I can't start this great recap of FY twenty-three without thanking my Trade Center team. They are phenomenal employees and what they produce in one year just completely wows me every year for what we're up against. And I just want to take a moment to thank them. I want to thank my catering team, the Trade Center Authority, who believes in me, who's been part of this whole dream from day one, as well as city council trusting me and the department heads on all the partnerships that have come into play this past year on bringing some phenomenal events to Columbus. It is a team effort to be able to produce five hundred and forty-three events in one year with eight hundred and sixty-four event days. I can't do that by myself. So everything you see is going to be a highlight of them, a highlight what we can do together and just know, yes, this is a recap of FY twenty-three, but this is also a thank you to you and allowing me to lead this amazing organization every single day. So I'm going to start with the numbers because the numbers tell a story. And this was another record-breaking year. We had a goal to produce five hundred and eleven events, which was an overzealous goal, but I knew it was also realistic. But we did five hundred and forty-three events this past year, eight hundred and eighty-five event days. Out of the whole fiscal year, we were able to have over two hundred thousand attendees walk through our Trade Center building. And then the space rental revenue, one point, over one point seven million. Net profit, almost one, over one point seven million. And then total city impact, look at that number right there, over nine point eight million. This is what we're doing to make a difference in Columbus. And some may say, okay, Haley, your space rental looks incredible, but we know that you have a client that's there every Sunday, that they are repeat business, but even when I subtract the revenue that client brings in, the Trade Center did over one point one million in rental revenue this past year. The total food and beverage revenue, which you do not see on this list, was close to three point seven million and the Trade Center received commission close to eight hundred thousand in that. And the best thing of all, it all is to impact the city. It's to make a difference, to show people why Columbus is truly amazing and how we are the second largest city in the state and we are able to execute events to that level as well. Some other numbers that I just want to share with you just as I was looking over this today. In January, January has always been my lowest month of the year. Usually it's your J months, but January was the highest January event revenue in the history of the Trade Center. February was the second highest net profit in the Trade Center history with over five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that year, that month. February twenty twenty-three was also the largest catering commission the Trade Center has ever received and over two hundred and eighty-six thousand that month. And out of ten, out of twelve events during the ten out of twelve months in this fiscal year, we broke monthly event revenue records all months except July and March. That's phenomenal. And I'm not saying that, I'm saying our team is phenomenal and I'm so proud of them. So real briefly, it's important for us to know, okay, we see the numbers, but what are people saying about us, right? Because that data is also important. So we created the P plus Q equals RE and I presented this last year, but I'm not going to quiz you. But P stands for people, Q is quality. And when you put those two together, are you creating a remarkable experience? Because when you create a remarkable experience, they come back, they tell others, and you're making an impact. Overall, based on fifty surveys, which I would love to see that number go up, we got an overall ninety-eight percent. Now, when you're looking at this slide, the one that stands out is you didn't get an A on food and beverage. Well, if you recall, this past year, we went through a lot of change in leadership with our vendor. And since we made those updates in leadership, since we made those updates in the team that comes on board, we have been getting stellar remarks and it's been phenomenal to see that because if your food isn't good, people are going to tell you. So I want to briefly go over the event highlights and instead of providing a lot of different words, I want to tell my story through pictures because it's going to be a great reminder to what you have been a part of this past year. Because again, without all the people around this table and City Manager knows the many emails back and forth, the support comes from what's in this room. So real briefly, one amazing thing that we were able to produce back in June was the Georgia GOP Republican Convention. And many of you know that that could not have take place without the success and partnerships with many department heads across the city. And it was so successful that I'm proud to say that one thing that we didn't think was going to even become a reality, they're coming back to us in May. So we're now booking this event back-to-back years and another great economic impact for this next fiscal year. The Georgia Republican Party State Convention, total revenue on the Trade Center side was over two hundred and forty-seven thousand. Now, another great conference that we were so proud of, and I think we have some attendees that are here, was the Georgia Association of Realtors Conference. We were so proud to have this event with us and they were actually one of the top events of the fiscal year this past year, bringing in over a hundred and twenty thousand. We would love to see them come back, but from this event, we got to showcase what Columbus can do. They saw all the new developments. They saw the thriving uptown. And we've had many people now reach out to us with other organizations because of the success of this conference. Miss Georgia, as the mayor knows, we're very grateful to keep this client here and many years to come, after this event that took place, they signed a contract till twenty twenty-seven with our city. Dancing Stars of Columbus, if you attended this event, it was a whole new remodel than what we typically have done, was very successful and brought such a great impact. And I can't highlight all the events today, but I just want to remind you, you're making a difference. The team's making a difference. Georgia Thespians, we're going to see them back in February and they are still my number one client as far as one single event, bringing in over four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And I have some exciting news towards the end of this presentation. So remember Georgia Thespians when I get to that. We ended up hosting the PNB Broadcasting Your Wedding Bridal Show. This is a typical show that has taken place at a different venue. But again, we're all about outreach. We want people to be able to grow. We have the space to allow that and that took place for the first time this year. The Georgia Association of Water Professionals was finally back after COVID. We worked with a whole different event staff. They brought in, you know how big our exhibit floors are? They brought in carpet to cover all of that for their event and it was a very successful event. The Georgia Democratic Party Convention, not only did we host the Georgia GOP, we also had the Georgia Democratic that was towards the beginning of the fiscal year. We created great relationships and trying to get them back on the map for Columbus. The one hundred and seventy-fifth Greater Columbus Chamber of Commerce Gala, the Aflac Christmas Party, which we found out a week before that Vanilla Ice was coming. So that was a whole increase in attendees for that event and our team did it. The Georgia Association of Educators, the Alpha Phi Alpha MLK Unity Breakfast. So glad to have them back this year because since COVID, the numbers have been down, but we were able to execute to the highest level. The Georgia Fire Conference, Chief Sal was so excited when he came on board because I was like, it's time to bring this conference to Columbus and it was a huge success. Sanovis Toast of the Town, the Delta Sigma Theta had their scholarship state meeting with us this year. Dr. Marsh got to host his Fountain City Mardi Gras. And what's so great, this event is still growing. They have now grown into a larger space for this upcoming year. So remember, yes, it's important for economic impact, but we exist for the citizens too. We exist for our nonprofits, our social gatherings. The Fountain City Tattoo Expo, you may remember many years ago, I came to y'all to change an ordinance because there was no tattooing on Sunday. This tattoo expo has grown. We have plenty of people that come in from all over the nation to attend this event each year. Ironworks Wedding, so we still are in the wedding business as well. We are putting an emphasis on conferences and conventions, but we still have had over forty brides this past year. Make History Menu, so if we're going to tell people our food tastes good, we got to show them too. So we've done a great job at advertising and doing promotional to show people you can trust the taste and the look by doing these menus. So again, I couldn't highlight everything, but I want you to know that we are making an impact, but there's still work to be done. And what's interesting is a lot of these things that are on this slide have not changed from last year, but I have updates and updates to come. The parking garage and the connector bridge. There's a lot in the works for this, as you know. And in upcoming city council meetings, you're going to hear those updates. So stand by, but know that this is a must for us to continue to see the growth and momentum for Columbus and for the Trade Center. The ARP, the new HVAC system. Been working very closely with a team with Johnny Floyd, Drell, Pam, and updates. And we should have an update from the vendor very soon on next steps to make sure we're getting the best thing, not to just put a Band-Aid on it, but to make sure that we're having the best air quality for years to come. Number three is really important for me. It's our security system. So we are currently on phase three of the camera project for the Trade Center. And I did get an update recently before this meeting while I was sitting in the back that I should have an update soon on where we're at as far as getting the camera upgraded, getting the security system upgraded because as you can, as I told you earlier, I have over two hundred thousand people coming through our building every single year. I'm not to the level of security and safety that I know we can be. And so I'm trying to make this a proactive thing now, not just for our citizens, not just for our attendees, but for our employees. It's a big building. There's a lot of doors. There's a lot of access points. And if we can't focus on this, I'm trying to prevent something, be proactive before a worse situation occurs. So that is something that is top on my radar. So that is something that is top on my radar, I'm excited to hear what the update soon, where we're at on phase three, because we do need an upgraded security system very soon before something worse happens. Fiber optic install, still working very close with our IT. We are currently still in a very outdated system when it comes to technology, when it comes to fiber optics. We know this is going to be a big project, working on what quotes look like for that, because this may be a Trade Center reserves project that we're going to be able to handle. Um, because, because of everything that's going on with technology, we need to be able to be a facility that can provide streaming to the highest potential, and not worry about anything phasing in and out when it comes to internet, that just needs to be an expectation. And of course cosmetic updates, as you can imagine with that much foot traffic, there's a lot of cosmetic updates that still need to take place. I'm working on what carpet repairs look like and carpet renovations. Um, many of you have commented on chairs recently. Well, with new carpet comes new chairs, because they have to match. So all of that is in the works, and making sure that when people walk in, they see a beautiful, clean building, one that's updated, but also has that vintage flair, and making sure that we look our very best. So these are some major projects. This is also, um, all on the radar with the Trade Center authority to what budgeting looks like for those. Just know you may be seeing me more this year when coming up to these projects. And I want to highlight our signature events, and I'm going to go through this briefly. Signature Events is our ability as Trade Center staff to give back to our community. It's our way to create an event from scratch, it teaches my sales team how to execute events from that angle, so then they know what a client goes through, but also a way for us to give. And we recently had our Princess for a Day, now this is from August of twenty twenty-two, last fiscal year. We were able to donate ten thousand dollars to Easter Sales, which is under the United Way umbrella, to help the children with disabilities through our Princess for a Day event. Not to mention, and I'm sorry that line is a little bit off, but we had our local mini-market, which was really big after COVID, to help our local, local entrepreneurs to be able to sell products that they make. And we just recently had a very successful, um, September event as well. Breakfast with Santa, this is my baby here, this was my first signature event, um, coming on board with the city. And last year, we raised thirty-three thousand for the Children's Miracle Network Hospital, which stays here directly in Columbus, and helping build the new children's hospital here in Columbus. Sip and Shop was a new event, we wanted to, we found out all of our local boutiques and also around the area, were struggling getting attendees to actually shop inside the store versus online. So we created a sip and shop event to where all the ladies and guys could come and shop and have a great time, and it was a great signature event. Cookies with the Easter Bunny. I heard the city and heard complaints that people wanted a place to see the Easter Bunny, so we created the event. Um, we had two hundred and ninety-eight attendees, over a hundred and twenty kids. Some of you may remember back in my Chick-fil-A days, I may have had experience as a Chick-fil-A cow, so I brought that back as the Easter Bunny, you know, whatever is needed. And we did a closet cleanout event, so this was an opportunity again for citizens to have an area to do a fall closet cleanout and have it right here in a space. A lot of times I'll look at when space has not been rented, how can we utilize it to help the community, and that's how that event was formed. So overall, great signature events, we're impacting the community, but what's to come? So this past year, we've already in this fiscal year done Dinosaur Adventure, we had a wedding content day. Georgia CTI Board Meeting was phenomenal, that conference is coming up in November, it's a new conference. United Way had their kickoff luncheon, Barbie brunch, as you can imagine, it was very popular in our community, so I created an event, and we had over two hundred people come. The recognition, I have to highlight this man here, this is our new executive chef, um, Brian Gilmore. He did a Taste the Difference event, and the numbers show, he is phenomenal leader in the kitchen. I'm so glad we got to keep that talent here, and that he is continuing to impress our clients every single day. Now, you remember I mentioned Georgia Thespians? Well, this time last year, it was only Chef's second day on the job, and I told him we had a really, really important site visit. So previously, I worked for the company where I set up state and national confer- conferences with Tri Leadership Resources. And one of the largest state entities in our community is Georgia CTSOs, Career Technical Student Organizations. The best way to sum it up, take Georgia Thespians and realize there's a conference like that over nine different sectors. One for business, one for healthcare, one for culinary, one for technology. And so we know we know how to execute events to that level. Each client has close to over four thousand to five thousand, um, students that attend, but they have smaller fall conferences. So we hosted every executive director, I'm actually here with one of my former boss in the picture, and finally got him to come to Columbus, got the team to come to Columbus. And for the first time, our city is going to be hosting the Georgia CTI Conference, Fall Conference, the Georgia FBLA Fall Conference. We had bids out for additional conferences, and what's going to happen is when they see what we can do in November, it's going to create a domino effect, I just know it. So really excited, and it's great for our community, they learn about Columbus State University, Columbus Tech, Troy, Mercer, it's just a domino. Ken was with us for twenty-three years, we got to celebrate him at his retirement, and still want to showcase him because a lot what takes place on is because of the development that he placed all the years of service. We had PSRW Week, we had to get a little creative, because my staff can't really leave the building when we're having events, so we hosted some unique events for the Trade Center and to show the team that we care. And then City Manager attended this, Ms. Ethel was recognized, she's on our catering team for forty years of service. So I have some people that's been with me a month, and I have other people that's been dedicated for over forty-something years, and we want to highlight that unique collaboration with those employees. Um, one of our employees went through the Leadership Development, um, program, we're so glad that Nicole Lewis got to accomplish that, and has continued to grow and through what the city offers when it comes to leadership opportunities. We won the Silver for Best Wedding and Event Venue with Columbus People's Choice Award. And we're currently nominated for Best of Georgia for Convention South, so you can go and vote once a day for us to win. And I know I started going a little fast towards the end, because I want to respect your time, but I want you to know that the Trade Center is making a difference, and I'm grateful to serve our team. We do have some things, like I said, projects on the horizon, that's only, only going to allow us to continue to do that. And thank you for the opportunity to make Columbus amazing, I appreciate all of you.
Haley, you and your team are just, it's, there's no description for, for the kind of job y'all do, and, and the pride that this community has in that facility, largely because of you and your staff, so, Counselor Kogel?
Yeah, thank you, um, Haley and your team, you guys are basically rock stars. I'm, I'm at the Trade Center at least once a week, um, for Rotary with Counselor Thomas over there. And, uh, and it is the most enjoyable experience, I wish you good luck this weekend for Christmas in the South, so.
Thank you.
It is.
We're expecting ten thousand people this weekend.
There will be a tremendous amount of people in the uptown footprint, so we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, Counselor Thomas?
Um, Haley, um, of all of the things that you described, if you talk with my seven-year-old nephew, the Lego conference that you had this last weekend was the only thing you ever need to bring. Uh, it was, it was a delightful experience for he and his, uh, four-year-old sister. And they, um, spent a little money, and they had a great time seeing all the Legos, so be sure to bring those guys back.
We're working on it, thank you. I love bringing unique events, they were a first-time client of ours.
All right. Haley, thank you, we look forward to the exciting stuff you're going to bring in in twenty-four too.
Thank you so much, have a great night everyone.
Uh, Mayor, next up, got, uh, final presentation, and that is going to be Sheriff Office Administration Building Director Rand Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have a brief update on the sheriff's office, we did a similar presentation a few weeks ago. Um, the sheriff is also, uh, here. So just recapping, the, the administration currently housed at the Government Center, primarily on the fourth floor of the tower, they are also in the, have, uh, locations in the wings as well. It includes all these different functions of the sheriff's office. It was included in the original RFP for the, uh, design and replacement of the Government Center complex. Um, the base contract was on council agenda at the October tenth meeting, and that was approved. So the base contract includes all the office space, all the basic stuff that would house all these departments at this facility. That contract was approved, um, on October tenth, and the contractor has started work at this time. Uh, during the design process, there were a few other, um, scopes of work identified that, um, felt maybe beneficial to include in this project, that the budget, uh, at this time simply cannot accommodate. One of those was a courtroom space with judges' chambers that could be utilized by a recorder's court. Um, again, includes, um, judges' chamber, holding cells, space for the clerk, security screening, all of that. Um, again, the current budget does not accommodate these costs, and, and again, the total cost would be, um, a little over one point six million. Um, talking with Deputy City Manager Hodge and the Finance Director, funding could be available, um, through the O-Lost Infrastructure Reserves. And I would have to defer any questions about the financial impacts to, uh, the Finance Director. And the other, um, items were, uh, items that the sheriff identified that his office needed, um, for their functions. Um, again, I have a list of those listed here, um, total costs for these items is a little over one point eight million. Again, I know the sheriff is here, um, to be able to answer any questions, um, that anybody may have.
Counselor Tucker?
Um, yes, I, I was going to ask the sheriff to come up, come up, but I do have a concern. Um, within our Columbus Police Department, we have a garage storage for vehicles, and I'm not sure what the plan is for this location. Um, when you say garage for storage of equipment and processing of vehicles for evidence is that similar to what CPD has far as that garage with the, um, where all their vehicles are housed, or is that, that separate?
Good afternoon, council, Mayor, council, City Manager, City Attorney. This would be something different than what Columbus Police Department, um, has. We currently identified all of the items that are listed up here in the initial, uh, project. However, the budget, um, did not cover these items that are listed up here. I believe that it's six items here, the, um, garage equipment would be for, it would be a processing bay, which, which would be for our crime scene investigators. Um, currently, if we had to process a vehicle, we'd have to take the vehicle somewhere else, we'd have to take them to the city shop, um, when we've had, uh, when someone fired at our, um, vehicle, and we could not find the rounds to it. What most agencies do, they have an area that they can take the vehicle to and house it there to get it out of the elements, um, that if something happens, and if it's, let's say that it's raining, you want to get fingerprints, or you want to be able to properly, uh, house the, um, house the evidence in a bay area to get it out of the, uh, elements, put it in a climate, uh, uh, area that, you know, that you can process it later on. The other piece of that is for us to move our explosive, um, ordnance and device van that we have. Um, currently, that supervisor will be coming into the new building. Um, he's housed in a very bad area, it's very, it's a high-risk crime area, basically, I, I don't want to say where it is, but it's not a safe place, and we have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of, uh, equipment in that place. Uh, as far as robots, um, uh, equipment for bombs and things like that. So we're trying to find somewhere to house it at safely, that's as far as the garage. The other, uh, piece for that is going to be the fitness center. Uh, I believe that, well, studies have shown that physical wellness and mental health wellness and spiritual health wellness is essential for what we do. Um, that there are a lot of individuals that work in public safety that carry, um, stress with it. If it's in the fire department, there's an area for them, police department, there's an area, um, for us. And we want to be able to move the gym, uh, gymnasium piece that we can use for, um, for training for new deputies coming in. Uh, we can use that for the wellness of the, um, of all of the deputies that we have, deputies and correctional officers, because we need to create more space within our jail facility. So if we can use that, move the work here from there and moving into the new building, because we're running out of space in the current jail. Um, if you do a tour of the jail, I would be more than happy to show you how we're, it's getting more dangerous and more dangerous, and we need to be able to utilize and make room for what we have. Uh, that's for item two, the canopy, uh, for the cover, um, for the, uh, parking for, that would be for the sheriff's office, e- um, equipment as far as watercraft, uh, four-wheelers, motorcycles, golf carts, and things like that. We have space that we pay fifty-seven thousand dollars a year at the River Mill, that we pay for storage. Um, at the rate that we seize vehicles and other things, it's costing us a lot of money. We're, we are trying to work with, uh, with the federal agency to provide space for us now, but that has not worked out. That, that has to go up when you deal with the federal agency, it's not like moving with the city or the county. There's a lot of paperwork that goes into it, so there's a lot of, uh, bureaucracy with that. Item number four is the IBIS system, this is the Integrated Ballistic Identification System. The city has already funded. It's called IBIS, um, it is Integrated Ballistic Identification System. What this is, is that the city funded this for us about, maybe about a year and a half. But what this does, this will help all of the courts that have helped Columbus Police Department, Sheriff's Office, um, Harris County, any outlined counties, uh, to help process, um, bullet casings, that if there's a, um, if there's a bullet casing on a crime scene, we can take that and we can test that and send it through, um, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Fire. The Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Farm, they've already come down to the new building, identified where we're going to put, uh, this machine, and they've already approved that. Um, there's a monthly cost of fourteen thousand dollars to just have the machine, the city didn't pay that. The federal agency will pay for that, and they house that, but what this Doug, Doug, that we're able to test the gun casing then to, um, see if there's a criminal nexus, uh, to see if this gun had been used in another city or county or state. What's happening now is that we're, we are having to send this through the GBI, and multiple counties are trying to use one source. Um, I believe that the Columbus Police Department, they've also asked for this, and it's been approved, but the whole process takes almost two years. And so with us having it, we would have, uh, officers trained within Columbus Police Department, Sheriff's Office, also through the DA's office. If we can get this, we can move cases a lot faster through the courts that involve gun casing, uh, uh, testing. The other item number five is to, uh, enhance the AB system for the Situation Room, which is a emergency operation room and also the media room. This media room would be more like what Columbus Police Department has as far as their community room. Um, this is where they do their training at, they invite the public to come in. One thing that, um, I know that the new chief and I that we're talking about is hosting large training here. Um, when we can get specialized training to come into Muskogee County, it opens up, um, ten, ten or maybe twelve seats that we can get here, that if we had to go elsewhere, we would have to pay thousands of dollars. And so when we can host those, um, those events or those, um, mini-conferences here, it impacts our city as far as hotel costs, um, restaurants, gas, and things of that sort. We would not be the first agency to do that, most agencies are doing that. Item number six, the perimeter fencing to, uh, provide parking for a portion of the parking lot. This is basically where we would put all of our fleet vehicles at. Um, we have no, you know, place to safely put them at. Um, because if we, if we're going to have vehicles parked out in the parking lot, we want to be able to keep them in a safe place. Uh, other agencies, uh, they have a safe place to store vehicles at. If we have a parking lot, we need to be able to protect our vehicles, because. If we have a parking lot, we need to be able to protect our vehicles because this is an investment. And so we want to be able to invest. I've looked at this list of what we have. Every item that's on here, we asked for this to be part of what we wanted initially. The budget process, I guess that through funding that they've come up short. And these are the six items that they could not budget for. So that's why I'm here to ask, to see if the council could perhaps work out something as far as funding. And that's all that I have, but if there are any other questions though.
All right, Counselor Thomas?
The, both this slide and the slide before it are things that this, well, the slide before it, the, the courtroom for the ju, for the Recorder's Court, council has said, we, we want that to be provided. It seems to me that the items that are on this slide are things that the sheriff's office needs to have in order to perform their duties. And if we combine the one point six million for, from, for the courtroom and the one point seven eight here, you have about three and a half million dollars that is, would be over the current budget. And I would ask Ms. Alexander, if you have any, off the top of your head, how much money is in the OLOS infrastructure reserve?
We anticipate, and of course, these are un-audited numbers at this point, but right now we're anticipating about four point two million in unassigned reserves in OLOS infrastructure.
In the infrastructure section?
In the infrastructure, yes ma'am.
Okay, four point?
Two.
Two.
Yes ma'am.
Well, it seems to me that this, you know, three point four, five million dollars, these are things that we have to have. You know, I, I don't know how the sheriff's office can be expected to do their job without some of this stuff. And I, I understand, well, I guess I don't understand, but, and Mr. Mayor, is it, is it appropriate at this time to make a motion to pay for these two items out of the OLOS?
I would defer, I would defer to the, to the Finance Director because we, I know we've got some other items that have been mentioned by folks coming out of that, using that as a potential.
The infrastructure reserve?
I know in some of the, some of the things that have been talked about for public safety. But it, but otherwise, I mean, the short answer is yes. I mean, council can make a, a motion and, and.
I guess we, do we have any additional, that's what I was gonna ask. Do we have any additional projects within that four point two? And can we go ahead and make a motion to approve this amount tonight to basically get this kind of wrapped up?
Well, I would request that you not make a motion tonight because it's gonna come back to you on the purchasing agenda. And when you approve that item to amend the contract to include these specific projects, the funding source will be OLOS infrastructure reserves. So you'll approve the reserves when you approve the item on the purchasing agenda for the.
Yeah, I think.
When is that coming, when is that coming on the agenda?
Yeah, I, well, I think you need to, we need to know that there's enough votes that we bring it back to you.
So do we need to make a motion to, so you'll know that we have enough votes to approve?
And then we'll bring it back officially in the amendment, yeah.
One of, one of my concerns, Mr. Mayor, is that we are in the process of building out this facility. And I don't want us to get too far down the line so that it would make, you know, increase the cost, if you will. Where you're not doing actual building out, I understand that, but we are putting together the final plans. And so with that said, I would make a motion that we include in the budget for the sheriff's administrative office the items that are on this list and the courtroom items.
Second.
All right, there's a motion second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll bring it back, I guess, the first meeting in.
It'll come back on the purchase.
On the purchase.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Wait, 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 what'd you say? You bring it back?
That's what we just talked about. I think they said they'd bring it back with the purchases as they bring back.
Well, what my motion said was that we approve these items. Now, the dollar amount, yes, you would bring back on the, on the purchase agenda. But these items that are on this.
Those are the.
Go into the, go into the program.
Right.
Is, is that where we are? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
They're done.
Thank you.
Counselor Begley?
Sheriff. Sheriff, I attended a session today that was talking about how the improvement of the homicide clearance rate, basically getting an arrest in the first year. Does the Integrated Ballistic Identification System help improve that rate?
Drastically, drastically, because a lot of the court cases that we have that they're held up because they're waiting for testing to come back. And so, you know, sometimes it takes about six months to get this. The best thing about what we have now is that this will allow the sheriff's office and Columbus Police Department to both be trained in this. And, but this will also come with a ballistic room involved to where we can testify the weapons there. So if you drive past the sheriff's office building and if you hear gunfire, that's what's going on there. We would be one of the, we would be one of the few agencies besides Macon, Beaufort County in this area that actually does that.
Got you. And one more follow-up question. On the, if we have additional court capacity and can increase our volume, should we expect to see revenue from that additional volume?
Could you say that?
Additional revenue from the volume of, by having an additional courtroom, is there any chance we'd get additional revenue?
Recorder's Court will always generate, Recorder's Court and Municipal Court are one of the huge generators as far as Superior Court. What that will do is that will allow us to move the cases, to get the people prosecuted, to get them out of our jail, to get them into the, to get them into the state prisons and off of our budget here.
Got it. So the sooner we move them out, the more money we save?
Yes, sir.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor and Council.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. Adam, clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, item one, our Minnesota various boards to be received.
Motion and second, receive the minutes. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Item two, our board appointments. We have one ready for confirmation, the Board of Tax Assessors. Mr. Todd Hammons was nominated to serve another term.
So motion and a second to confirm Mr. Hammons. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council appointments, nominations from the commission and may be confirmed. Counselor Crabbe.
All right, motion second to confirm Mr. Barker. Any discussion to that appointment? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, Mr. Barker is confirmed.
Thank you. Next, we have council nominations. The nominees, there are three nominees that must be submitted to the authority for their selection.
Where's our second? All right, there's a motion second to forward the stated names to the Medical Center Hospital Authority. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. The Board of Elections and Registration, Edwin Roldan, as well as Diane Scripps. Both are requesting to serve another term of office if a member of council. Counselor Crabbe has made that nomination. And then for the seat of Margaret Jenkins, who is retiring. Counselor Tucker is nominating Annette Williams for this seat. And we will bring this back for confirmation.
I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas?
I would want to make note to the council and to the citizens of Columbus that Ms. Jenkins has been on the elections board for seven terms. A term is four years. So she's going off of that board after twenty-eight years of service to this community. And we can't just let that pass. We've got to stand up and cheer. And so I would request, Mr. Mayor, that we have a proclamation honoring Ms. Jenkins in, in addition to the letter for thanking her for her service.
We'll get with Ms. Born and get the information and we'll get it put together.
Thank you, Counselor Thomas. For the Board of Health, Dr. Sylvester McRae, he is interested in serving another term if a member of council wanted to nominate him. Counselor Huff has made that nomination. Dr. James Lopez is not eligible to serve another term. Therefore, this seat is open for nominations. For the Board of Water Commissioners, Mr. Clint Cox, he's going to be relocating outside of Muskogee County. Counselor Thomas is nominating Nick Smith for this seat. And we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. Thank you, Counselor Huff. We have had contact with Ms. Williams and she has requested to rotate off the board. Thank you. We also have a vacant seat. Therefore, we have two seats that are open for nominations on this board. For the Land Bank Authority, Mr. Chris Phillips, he's also relocating outside of Muskogee County. Oh, go ahead. Okay, thank you, Counselor Begley. We will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. Next, we have the Tree Board. We have the seat of Faradus Berry. This is an at-large member. Robert Heck, this is the Commercial or Industrial Development Seat. Chris Henson, this is the Environmental Advocacy Representative. Troy Keller is the Educator Seat. Frank Tommy, the Residential Development Seat. Faradus Berry and Robert Heck are both eligible to serve another term if a member of council wanted to place their name in nomination. We will still have to make contact with them and make sure that they are interested in continuing to serve. But yes, Counselor Crabbe is making that.
Counselor Thomas?
Let her finish and then I want to, before we go, away from her agenda.
Is making that nomination. Also, Counselor Kogle is nominating Amy Spencer for a seat on this board. And we'll bring this back at the next meeting and determine which seat she will be eligible to fill. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am clerk. Ms. Tom, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that you take a look at and perhaps put a committee together of counselors and other interested folks. As I was looking at some of these boards to decide whether, who I thought might serve on that board, some of the conditions of these boards are pretty out of date. And I would like for us to have a, a committee of counselors to take a look at all of the boards and to see, are there things that we need to change? Are there things that we need to, are there portions of those that we need to, you know, like the Tree Board? Do they need to meet monthly, quarterly? Just whenever there's a tree that needs to be removed, the, the board description doesn't say. And so there's some of those kinds of things that I, I would like for us to bring up to date. I know that if you're like me, other counselors are like me, I, I'm having a hard time finding particularly younger people to serve on the boards because they don't have the time or the inclination. And so I want to make sure that we're doing, we're, we're making these attractive and we're also taking care of the business. So if you would just give that some consideration to putting together something like.
We'll do that. We'll work with the clerk's office to try to kind of create a current matrix of which board does what and how many terms and all that stuff. And then we'll get it to that committee and that way it'll be at least orderly so we can work through it.
And it may be that, you know, at our, at the, at one meeting, we, we look at the Tree Board and at the next meeting, we look at the Land Bank Authority and the, you know, we don't have to do them all at one time.
We'll come up with a way. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Counselor Barnes?
Yes, just want to remind everyone about the Veterans Day Parade. November eleventh, starting at nine thirty. You still get your applications online to city website or Columbus and Phoenix City Parks and Recs. And after the Veterans Day Parade, there will be a thank you to veterans. We're starting about twelve thirty. Bring a lawn chair. We have bouncing things for kids. The show will start about one forty-five. We have artists, national artists that are coming, paying their own way here, their own lodging for their, just for veterans. They say thank you to veterans. And the final thing, I'd like to really sincerely thank Columbus State University for nominating me for the Thomas Y. Whitley Award, Distinguished Alumni. I should be giving Columbus State an award. They took a fifty-eight-year-old retired Master Sergeant, frisely retired Master Sergeant, gave me a lot of remedial courses because it's a long time that I was in a classroom, a lot of trips around the sun before I sat in a classroom, encouraged me. And, and to receive an honor like that is just mind-blowing. I just appreciate it. And I should thank them, really, they should not be honoring me.
Congratulations, well-deserved. Counselor Tucker?
On Saturday from five to seven, myself, Parks and Rec, Public Safety, United Way, ninety-eight point three and a host of other individuals will be doing trunk or treat. And I just wanted to make sure I remind the citizens that we're having, and I appreciate Parks and Rec because they just did one on the twenty-first last Saturday and we're coming back again in District Four to do another one. So, but thank you, everybody. Oh, Shirley B. Winston from five to seven. And all of Public Safety will be there, Fire Department, EMS, CPD, the sheriff, and also MCP and a lot of other people.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I just wanted to do an update on these council referrals for my number seven for the Parks and Recreation update for the Heath Park. I am working on getting a grant from the Georgia Association of Realtors to help us fund some of these upgrades. And so I'm working on that right now.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And I know we've got an executive session. We've got three individuals that stuck around for an additional three minutes, so we're gonna grant those now. First is Mr. Broadwater. If you want to come to the podium, sir, we appreciate your patience.
What a record. Mr. Mayor, again, thank you. Y'all know who I am, Martin Broadwater, senior. One of the things I just wanted to summarize to, and since I sit there, I got seventeen texts asking me, are you running for office? Let's get the record straight. I am not running for office. However, I do like and love being a part of this democracy. I love to come here and sit and watch democracy in action. And I say to the citizens of this great community that I decided to make my home. When you come here, it's not for you to just sit, stand here and criticize these folks up here because they do have a tough job. And that includes the city manager and all the department heads, not just the counselors. But you can't come up here and attack. And I just want to make sure that we understand that, that this podium is not a bully pulpit, period. It is democracy. It is for those to come up here and cite their issues or concern with this city. I love Columbus. I'm pretty passionate about it, but when someone. But when someone attacks my city manager, for all practical purposes, attacks one of you all. I've had some disagreements with some of you, but I'm not going to come up here and attack you. To me, that's wrong. I just, and every part of my being says it's wrong. And I want the citizens to know, if you come up here and do it, you might see Mr. Broadwater at the next meeting. I'm just telling you what I'm talking about. And for those of you that talk about the First Amendment, that hide behind the First Amendment. The First Amendment, a lot of us have gone to war, got injured for wounds you can and cannot see so that you can practice the First Amendment. But it does not mean you can come up here and say anything that you want. You have to have some type of decorum. I thank you all for the job you do. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater. Thank you for your patience. All right, next, Mr. Vegas. And I hope I'm saying your name right.
Yes, sir, you are. I'm going to add that this time, Mr. Healy, I appreciate your words and we appreciate the relationship we've had with the city over the years. Here trying to keep my foot in the door. With reference to the emails, we're not the only ones that received, you know, notices of concerns or issues from Public Works. I'm sure that the other vendors that have been recommended, that are doing work, they have folders as well. We received some emails regarding areas that we actually weren't doing service to. The cemeteries, for several years, I've tried to increase the frequency and I've submitted proposals to service that on a more frequent basis. Ms. Short, her team, they were coming on the alternate weeks. Our contract had us performing services every two weeks, which was insufficient and it needed to be done on a more frequent basis. But I don't believe her department had the funds to actually do that. Mr. Allen, with regards to your remark, the, about 80% of the contract from the previous grounds maintenance proposal that was submitted and voted on, as well as the one here tonight, is going to the private equity firm out of Birmingham. That company's called Landscape Workshop. And they had acquired a company called Cut Above. So that was the previous vendor that's been acquired by the private equity firm. But I think the other thing that I'd like to say is that in June of this year, we were on a six-month extension with the city. They gave us monthly and bimonthly incremental increases to stay on while they went through the RFP process. And then during that time, right there during the end of June for the GOP convention, we were given additional $16,000 worth of work to do within a matter of days to prepare for that. And we did that. And I guess if we were doing such a poor job, I don't see how we stayed on for six months past the renewal process and how we were given additional work right there before we weren't granted an opportunity to do business with the city anymore. But I think the more important questions are, how does a tenured city employee decide to leave his job without knowledge of knowing that he's being offered the very contract that was canceled just a few months ago? Why is purchasing not presenting, or why are they presenting proposals without vetting or due diligence? It didn't seem like they had many answers. And why was the initial contract not canceled with the other vendor when there were clearly codes and ordinances that were not followed and discrepancies and bias that appeared to take place? I really just don't know how you justify spending $3 million more, taxpayer money, to grant a city employee, now previous employee, some work when he did not meet the initial contractual and state requirements within the previous RFP. That's all I really have to say and I do appreciate y'all's extra time.
Thanks, sir. All right. Next is Ms. Audrey Palmore. Ms. Palmore? Thank you for your patience. Now, Ms. Palmore, you'll have three minutes this go-round, okay?
I'd like to emphasize the two sheets that were revealed during my presentation are primarily for the present-day ears of Hardy and Mandy Pearl Williams' property located at 2928 10th Street in Columbus, Georgia. Beds are being taken for a sale of the property before demolitioning. And we would like for you to send any bid of interest to Post Office Box 5945, Columbus, Georgia, 31906. Thank you for your opportunity to speak for three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Palmore. All right. And we, we've had a request to go into executive session, I believe on real estate procurement and disposal. All right. Motion in a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. We'll clear the courtroom, go into executive session. All right, we are back in regular session. We were in executive session. We were back in executive session where we discussed litigation, real estate acquisition and disposal, and personnel. No votes were taken. Unless anybody has anything else. Counsel Kogle?
I just, I would like to revisit my earlier motion. Want me to reinstate my motion?
Yeah, restate.
As per Section 4-307, Section 5 of the Charter, I would like to make a motion to that the city manager personally provide a three-to-five-page executive summary on what's going on in the Finance Department, Occupational Taxes, Business License Departments, its status, the management failures and systematic problems that have occurred and are reoccurring, the practices and authorizations of citations and/or delinquency notices that were directed at businesses. Who issued those authorized, who issued and authorized those notices? Why businesses who were delinquent, were not delinquent, were contacted? And why we are delayed in collections? This report should be finished and provided no later than COB on October 30th.
Is there a second? All right, motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
All right. All those opposed, do likewise. All right. Counsel Tucker?
Oh, this is not to that one. You can leave.
That's done.
Oh, yeah, okay. I would like to approve Purchase Item B, the Ground Maintenance Service Annual Contract. That way, we won't have any delay in services.
All right, there's a motion second to approve B under the city manager's purchases. Counsel Thomas, to the motion.
Mayor, one of the questions that I had for the city manager, Mr. City Manager, when was this grounds maintenance contract supposed to start? What is the beginning date of that if we approve it? I'm sorry? Has the old contract expired?
They do a month-a-month. That's, I think they had extended up to six months for that person.
Counsel Thomas, your light went off. I'm sorry.
Upon approval of council, that contract will begin.
It was, it's off again. Would you hit the button one more time? Here we go.
I'm sorry. What did you say?
I didn't hear it. I was trying to get your light on.
Oh, okay. My question was, when was the contract supposed to start? So if we approve it tonight, it starts tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor of approval, say aye. Any opposed? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Still approve Item B in the purchases. That was the grounds contract. Mr. Vegas, who is here? Once again, raise your hands if you're in favor of the motion.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
All right. Those opposed?
One, two, three.
City, yes or no? Four Seasons.
It was Four Seasons and Landscape Workshop Columbus.
All right, it's approved. It's approved. There were six affirmative votes.
And me and Mayor Protem mentioned that we felt like you all understood the local, you know, the local contracts. And possibly, I know Counsel Crabb made a comment about, you know, showing some mercy. You know, maybe in the future, we can, if they make the bid, grant for the outdoor solutions. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, just want to give that final vote. It was seven to three.
Seven to three. Very good.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, if there's no other business, it needs, motion second adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Any all opposed?